With the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at Bartle School, 435 Mansfield Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Lynda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Ms. Simarusti?
Here.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 24th regular public and executive session meeting and the March 11, 2014 executive session meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Lynda?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes, but abstain from March 11.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Abstain on the executive session from the 24th, but yes to the other two.
Oh, should I abstain from that also since I wasn't there for the full meeting? Are you talking about March 11?
No, for the executive session.
If you were there and you approved the minutes, then you can say yes. It's your choice.
I'm there.
Okay.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Before we do anything else, could we just move these microphones around since we have what you guys are sharing and if we could just slide down? Thank you. Right, that can be shared if that's okay?
I'll share.
Thank you. Lynda, are there any communications?
There were a few emails that came through during the period of time since the last meeting, which all the board members should have received, just a few this time. And also, of course, the board members would have received the communications from the board candidates, which was shared with them.
Okay. And so to that point, we are going to begin the interviews for the interim board member candidates. And Lynda?
Okay. Want me to explain the process?
Yes, please explain the process.
So, we are going to be pulling names out of a hat, out of a box, excuse me. All the names have been placed in here, and we're going to have an impartial person or persons pull the names. And then each person will be assigned to a different location to wait until it's their turn to come and be interviewed by the board. I will be, I have the paper, but papers are a little challenging for me right now. What I would like to ask, if the board is in agreement to have the student representatives pull the names, and I have locations designated for each of the candidates, and then the student representatives have agreed to assist with bringing the candidates back and forth. Okay?
And for the timing of the statements and questions?
That I would defer to the board president to describe the procedure with regard to the interview.
Okay, so each board candidate will be allowed the opportunity to present a three to five-minute opening statement, and then I will be asking two questions. The same two questions will be asked to each of the candidates. There will be no follow-up questions. We will say thank you once all the candidates have completed, and then we will move to executive session to make the determination about seating the new interim board member. Girls?
I'll bring it over.
Sharice Richardson?
And that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so...
I'm going to explain or describe the locations where each person will be. As I said, the student representatives will be retrieving you when it's your turn. This will be the order of the interviews. So Kiara Silleri will be staying here for her interview. Ashley Wharton will be escorted to the main office. Jessie Croson will be escorted to the library media center. Sharice Richardson will be escorted to the teachers lounge. I'll assist with this, just so we can move it along. And Simone Shopowicz will be escorted to the teachers' conference room. So we'll take care of...
Can I just ask a quick question on process?
Yes.
And this is maybe a silly question, but are they going to stay here after their presentations, or they're taken back?
They'll be escorted back to the room that they are in.
Just making sure I understand that.
Yeah.
Is there a reason to do that? Or is that the...
That's been our practice.
Okay.
So that it's, each person, it doesn't...
That's fine.
Yeah, no pressure.
Okay.
Okay, so if everyone except for Kiara would stand up and meet us at the back door here, we'll escort you all.
Okay, so Kiara, you can come down. And so it'll be a three to five-minute opening statement, and then I will ask you a question. You'll have about two minutes to respond, and then I'll ask you a second question.
Sure.
And the same thing, two minutes.
Sure. So thank you so much for actually inviting me and giving me the opportunity to...
Can you speak into the mic?
Ah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Is it working? Not very good at this. It's collapsing. Excuse me. Okay, so yes, thank you so much for inviting me and for letting me come and talk about my interest in becoming part of the board. As some of you know, I want to start introducing myself by saying that I, some of you know that already, that I have been a member of the Highland Park Education Foundation for the past three years.
Can we get him down here?
Guess I'm going to have to hold the microphone. And during that time, I have, I found myself, well, part of the, large part of the job of the foundation is to raise money, to fund grants for teacher enrichment, enrichment of their classes. And during this time, I've learned two things. The first one is that a lot of the grants that the teachers were applying for were for enrichment programs, activities, and initiatives in their classrooms that in a different economy you would have thought the school could actually provide money for. But we are in an economy at a time when the budget is what it is, it's constantly shrinking, and the teachers do need that kind of privately raised funding to actually perform and make their classes the best they can. And that, to me, was something that really hit home because I had always thought that that kind of creativity could be brought to the classroom without the need of extra funding, but it's not there anymore. With that, though, came the realization of another thing, and it is that we are surrounded by a body of faculty of teachers at this school who are incredibly creative and interested in enriching their curriculum, their classroom constantly. The grants that they've applied for, going from pre-K to high school, are all incredibly interesting, and they show that they really work hard to make their curriculum as productive of learning for the students as much as they can. This takes me to want to talk a little bit about my background and the way I think my experience and expertise can actually be productive for the board. As I teach in a composition program, and I mostly teach first-year writing, which means that I get students coming straight from high school to college. And what I do for my job, a lot of it is creating and working with curriculum and working and developing a curriculum that allows me as a teacher to bring to the classroom as much as I can of my knowledge and pass it down to the students and make students, make sure that it emerges in the students' work. And a lot of what I understand about curriculum development is related to the fact that it's something that is made up in dependence between teaching, between the preparation of the teachers, and the support that an institution provides. And I'm very familiar with many of the questions, many of the challenges that it takes to develop a curriculum that's really functional, it works well. And the fact of the matter is that some of what we want to do as teachers comes out of what we really believe as something that's productive, and some of that comes from the mandates that we all have. And to these days, these mandates are getting more and more present. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. No, that was perfect. So the first question, hello. And if you could just hold the mic a little bit up when you're answering.
I will.
Thank you. The first question is, what specific skills would you bring to the board? And you'll have about two minutes to answer that question.
Well, I mean, the learning and the understanding of the collaborative efforts that it takes to develop a good, strong curriculum, and my understanding is that the position that I'll be taking is to cover for somebody who's running that curriculum. The understanding that for making a curriculum work, you do need a strong support for the teachers, you need a programming and a creation of an inter, a net of support. So that is something that I think I could work. I know what questions get to be asked, and I know what challenges as teachers we have in order to overcome those challenges.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, and again, you'll have about two minutes to answer, what areas would you like to strengthen in our district?
I think that at this point, because of the upcoming changes that the core standards are bringing, because of the testing that's going to come together with that, I think something that needs to be done is, first of all, at the curricular level, and I've already talked about that, but also to make sure that the teachers do have the support, the training, and so that is one thing. And the other thing, I think it's essential to maintain what we already have, that is small class sizes that allow for a successful differentiated teaching method, and that will help hopefully to address one of the other, the other big problem of this school, that is the gap. And that is the perfect, the best environment, when you can have a teacher who can actually pay attention to what's going on, one-on-one, small groups, that's how it works. And therefore, the small class is something that's really important. So no, we can't afford to lose teachers, and we can't afford to not invest in programs that help them.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thanks.
So one of you can get Ashley from the main office, and the other of you can escort Kiara to the hallway outside, in the hall, the bench. Kiara, one of the students will be helping you.
Hello.
Good evening.
So the process will be, you'll have about three to five minutes to give an opening statement, and you'll have two questions asked after that. There will be no follow-up questions. You'll have about two minutes to answer each question.
Okay.
Okay, so you can begin, just be aware, the mic's a little, yeah.
Do you mind if I lift it up?
Nope.
I'll be bent down. Thank you. So just the initial pitch, is that acceptable?
Yes, three to five minutes.
Initial pitch. Right now, I feel like a masochist, I must admit. So my name is Ashley Wharton. While I admittedly don't have a background in education, and have only recently become interested in education and the larger political arena that's impacting education, I do think I have some transferable skills. As you'll know from my resume, but for the benefit of everybody, my background is in healthcare, both as a clinician initially, and then more recently with technology. So both clinical background and then more recently a master's in information systems management. And while we do have pressing technology issues that I recognize and have come up frequently during many conversations, both at the Board of Ed and outside within the community, it's not so much the technology that I'd focus on, but more the pressures that healthcare is under. I mean, there can't be anyone in the room that is not aware of the pressures that have inundated healthcare for the past five to seven years. When I originally became a clinician, I had a phone call saying, you know, come and work here, come and work in the home healthcare sector, it's nirvana. About six months after that, all hell broke loose, much like it's doing in education right now. And within that, in that home health sector where I've predominantly spent my time in a nonprofit organization, we've undergone significant cuts over the past five years. The past five years alone, we've seen 15% reduction in Medicare reimbursement. That reduction is impacting very frail and vulnerable population that require a great deal of care in their home. So that, those cuts have had a tremendous impact, right? They've required a significant amount of change and change management. And it's that that I'd like to focus on, and where I think the skills are transferable and that I can be of service to the board and to the community at large. Because it's addressing those changes and those pressures. And by the way, in each and every one of those years in which a rate has been reduced, there's also been significant, every single year, there's been a significant new regulation or new mandate that we've had to comply with. Again, much like education, so it's kind of transferable. The way we've succeeded, the way the organizations that have been providing care to the most frail and vulnerable in our society, in the cities, urban, throughout New Jersey, and actually now the organization we're throughout the country, is collaboration, clear communication at all levels with all involved, and collaboration. It's through that clear communication and collaboration that as a community, so in healthcare, as a community of healthcare providers, it will be the same within our community. We need to move forward together collaboratively, and we need to challenge and use every avenue at our disposal, be it state assembly, state senate, national, so federal, US congressmen, US senators. It's challenging the mandates that are coming down and provoking, providing that financial pressure on us as a district that we need to seek redress through. At the same time, I will say, I'm not in favor of unilaterally withdrawing from those mandates. I think just as in healthcare, we have to prepare locally to meet those, to meet those mandates, but that doesn't stop us challenging them at a state, a national level. And while I want, while I kind of want to say that change isn't a good thing, we can take advantage of the change that's coming down in speaking to many districts around us. They've had a tremendous, they've taken advantage of this opportunity, these changes, and they've kind of taken advantage of it so that it's a tide that lifts everyone. It provides for everyone across the board, and I think that's our opportunity. There is one change that I would reject, and the whole discussion of Common Core and the park tests, the one item that I would reject or seek very aggressive petitioning on is the decoupling of the park testing from teacher evaluation. I think it would be absurd to implement that process at this point in time when so much, so much rests on it for the teachers, when we've had so little time to prepare, and the results are unknown. How it's going to impact our children is unknown. So that is one item that I would push very strongly for, is the decoupling of teacher evaluation from the results of the test. But everything else, I think we have a responsibility to prepare locally and fight nationally.
Thank you. What specific skills would you bring to the board?
The ability to, so while in healthcare, working both as a clinician in the field and later on in leadership positions, again, it's been through collaboration and seeking the common ground, seeking the middle ground. Taking an ideological stand on any issue never lets anyone move forward, it just creates divisiveness. So hopefully, the ability to bring everyone together, to seek a common purpose, and to move forward.
Okay, thank you. And then for the second question, what areas would you like to strengthen in our district?
Communication. I think, I think putting together a clear vision, and this isn't a critique of anyone at the table or anyone in past, past members of the board, but I think clear communication of a vision of where we want to take our children in our district, I would like to contribute to that. And within, within that framework, if we are adopting the Common Core, we can ensure that we're doing it to the best of our ability and not leaving any child behind, i.e. not teaching to the test, not butchering the entire system, but enhancing the system.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello.
Hi.
So the opening statement will be about three to five minutes, and then I will ask you two questions, and for each question, you'll have about two minutes to answer each one.
Okay. My name is Jay Croson. I'm here to apply for the open seat on the Board of Education. I've lived in Highland Park for 25 years, and I have two children who are in the Highland Park schools. My oldest is a junior in the high school, and my youngest is a seventh grader in the middle school. My kids have been in all of the schools in Highland Park. I have worked with the administration and the teachers in all of those schools as my kids have progressed through their educational experience. Both of my parents are public school teachers, and my sister is a public school teacher as well.
Jay, if, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you wouldn't mind just getting a little closer to the microphone, just speak up a little bit, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
How's that? Both of my parents are public school teachers, and my sister is a fifth-grade teacher in Florida as well. My father served as the president of the local union affiliate of the National Education Association in Hillsborough County for four years. And both my parents and my sister remain active in the NEA. My main interest in serving on the board is to contribute to the efforts of our community to address educational disparities in our schools. Our schools have, as we all know, a lot of strengths, including a strong music and drama program, pre-kindergarten, full-day kindergarten classes, and a dedicated teaching staff. However, our schools disproportionately allow children from families with fewer economic resources, those from African-American and Latino families, and those with special needs to fail to achieve their full educational potential. This is why our middle school was recently identified as a focus school for its significant achievement gaps. My review of the recent school report card for the middle school shows that in language arts, for example, there were no Hispanic or economically disadvantaged sixth graders and no African-American seventh or eighth graders who tested as advanced proficient, while over a third of white students in all these grades tested advanced proficient. There are similar patterns throughout the other grades in the middle schools, and in science as well. At the same time, over the past three years, our high school has steadily dropped in independent rankings out of the top 50 high schools in the state. These are serious issues and things that we need to work on to improve the quality of our schools. Taking responsibility for addressing educational disparities is inherently, I believe, an issue both of fairness and quality, and closing the achievement gaps while raising quality overall will improve our schools for all students. I realize that addressing the ongoing structural effects of racism and economic inequality in our society is a big challenge for our school system and our community. And meeting this challenge will take consistent commitment and an open-minded search for the most effective methods. The hard choices we may have to make along the way must always be guided, I believe, by a commitment to the principal objective of public education, to provide a high-quality education to all of the children who attend our schools. I'm convinced that with creativity, open minds, and constructive community involvement, we can effectively address educational disparities while ensuring that we continually improve the quality of our schools for all children.
Thank you. The first question that the board has is, what specific skills will you bring to the
I am a health policy researcher. I have a PhD from Rutgers in political science, and I study organizational change and quality improvement. And in the healthcare field, I'm not an education policy expert, but I believe that those research skills and the open mind that I would bring to the problems that we're faced with would be a useful additive to the board.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, what areas would you like to strengthen in our district?
The things I'd like to strengthen in the district are, I think the quality of the high school needs to be substantially improved, and we've had a series of problematic hires in science over the last few years, and something about that process needs to be looked at so that we can get higher-quality instruction for the students in the high school. Many high, many students in the high school, for example, will graduate without ever really being taught chemistry or physics. That's really unacceptable. In addition, we need, we have two, we have open principal positions that we're seeking to fill, and one of the most important determinants of long-term school quality is high-quality leadership in school. And we really need to make sure that we choose wisely when we choose the principals for those schools, and those choices will have a long-term impact on the quality of education in this district and on closing those achievement gaps.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Handouts?
Thank you.
Just leave them there. Pass everything else out. So Sharice, you'll have three to five minutes to make an opening statement, and then I'll ask you two questions, and you have about two minutes to answer each one.
Okay. Wonderful.
And just be aware, the mic's a little... You just have to get a little close to the mic when you speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Highland Park Board of Education, Mr. Capone, Mr. Soto, community members, parents, students, teachers, and Highland Park administrators. My name is Sharice Richardson. I live at 227 Benner Street here in Highland Park. I've been a resident of this city since 1993, borough rather, not city, but the fine borough of Highland Park. I moved here for the diversity, for the town's diversity, and I absolutely love the environment and the atmosphere that we found here, and my partner and I decided to settle in 2005. We decided to buy a home here and become homeowners and plant our roots here in Highland We're both working parents. We're very engaged in the schools, however. We stay involved volunteering for various school events, chaperoning trips, being guest readers in the classroom, meeting regularly with our children's teachers and the staff in the after-school program. In addition, my partner recently joined CPAC and the Communications Task Force, and I began regularly going to the school board meetings to keep abreast of what was happening in the district. Through these experiences, I have come to know and love the Highland Park schools as a strong, caring academic community where professional staff nurture and value each student. Our schools play a central role in supporting and enhancing the vibrant, diverse community of Highland Park with all of its ethnic, religious, cultural, gender, and linguistic diversity. And our families and community members in turn provide a broad base of support for the accomplishments of our district's goals, the success of our students. Interdependence is clearly one of the keys to our success here. As an involved parent, a community member, and an educator, I have thus become naturally developed a deep concern for our students and for their academic and life success. Although we have gaps in student achievement that have seen some modest gains based on the NAEP scores at the national level, recent state assessments have identified that there's more work to be done, and that's why I'm seeking a seat on the Board of Education. I have 19 years of administrative experience in higher education. I have worked as assistant dean for first-year students for the past nine years now at Rutgers School of Environmental and Biological Sciences. Over my 19 years, I've acquired a broad range of skills and experiences, including collaborating across Rutgers as well as with other universities throughout the country, running academic support programs, doing project planning, budgeting, dealing with personnel issues, collecting data and analyzing it. And I also am responsible for helping to build support programs that are complementary to the work done by our faculty and which help students to succeed in the transition to college and beyond. As head of the Rutgers School of Environmental and Biological Sciences First Year Advising Program, I was able to improve upon our academic achievement gap within our school by tracking performance... Sorry. By tracking students' performance, benchmarking outcomes, and working with a dedicated set of faculty and staff. We were able to reduce our academic probation rate from 33% to 24% over the last five years that I've been working and heading up the first-year advising program. In a district our size, and my student population is about 700 students, in a district our size, we can have a real direct impact on that achievement gap by working one-on-one with students. Our problems are very manageable and solvable if we utilize all of our assets, provide quality professional development and resources where needed, and dedicate ourselves to staying the course and engaging the whole community in making a difference. Working at a public university, I'm acutely aware of the difficulty of operating under a budget shortfall. I myself am involved in managing one small budget and then have responsibility also for working on appropriate expenditures for a $100,000 recruitment budget for our college as well. So while things look different at the K-12 level due to new expenses for teacher evaluation systems, the coming PRC tests, rising charter school costs, et cetera, I'm well aware that there are often difficult decisions that have to be made in trying to find a balance between the strategic plans of the administration, the needs of teachers and students, the wishes of the community, and the requirements of government. I am ready to work with Mr. Capone, Mr. Soto, the Board of Education members, and other stakeholders on finding creative, reasonable solutions to our challenging budget issues, including seeking community partners, keeping Highland Park kids in Highland Park schools, and applying for educational and programming grants. I would welcome the opportunity to work collaboratively to help prepare Highland Park children for an exciting challenges of the 21st century. I'm willing to serve on any of the three subcommittees. I can also advise on technology as well, as that is something that I do in my current position across a broad range of educational platforms. But wherever I am needed, I am willing to serve. I can work in educational equity, policy assessment, alignment of resources and goals, climate and culture, outreach and communication. I truly believe that student success is everyone's business, from the administration to the Board of Ed, to the teachers, the staff, the parents, the community, and yes, of course, the students. I believe in Highland Park schools, and I will work with all of you to make them even better than they are now. I welcome your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The first question is, what specific skills would you bring to the board? She certainly did, didn't she? The same questions must be asked to each candidate.
Absolutely. I'm knocking everyone's pens to the floor. There are a number of things that I could bring to the board in terms of the skill base that I have from my prior work. Certainly, the work that I do in student transitions in particular, since we seem to have a problem transitioning from fifth grade to sixth grade, is a little bit different, obviously, because I'm working with 17, 18-year-olds in their transition to college. It's a different maturity level. But looking at student development, looking at how the curriculum aligns, looking at issues with school culture, within school culture, we can identify specific areas that we can address. I have a great deal of experience in that area in particular, because that's what I've done for the last nine years.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, what areas would you like to strengthen in our district?
In terms of our current district programs, I mean, I think that there are... There's room for us to work towards a better technology application in these schools. In speaking with teachers, we need both infrastructure in terms of our internet access, our bandwidth within the classrooms, as well as actual, you know, tablets or carts or what have you. But the other piece that needs to go with that is appropriate professional training in how to roll out and effectively utilize those in the classroom setting. For our students who are also special needs, it provides a wonderful opportunity for them to be able to access material in a different way. Also, for students who are kinesthetic learners, they are able to access material in a different way by being able to utilize technology in the classroom setting. There are also possibilities of being able to engage in distance learning as well as be able to take advantage of opportunities for pre-college program coursework by using the computer platforms in the high schools.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
So you'll have about three to five minutes for your opening statement, and then I'll ask you two questions, and you have two minutes to answer each one. And just be aware of the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Simone Schapowicz. I've been a lifelong resident of Highland Park. It's my home, and I care deeply about the community. I know the community more intimately than others who reside here due to the fact that I have lived here all my life. I've lived here long enough to know the residents and the dynamics of the Highland Park school system as well as the community at large. I've attended Highland Park schools for six years, and I owe much of my success to the preparation that the Highland Park schools has given me, as well as making me aware of the school system's various strengths and weaknesses firsthand. Selecting me to the Board of Education is selecting someone who could be a true representative of those attending Highland Park schools. Since it's only been two years since I've graduated from Highland Park High School, I can provide a fresh and new perspective to the Board of Education. My only agenda in applying to the Board of Education is to better the school system for all students. It would not only benefit the Board of Education to select me, but this position would provide me with a tremendous amount of experience and advocacy, which is the most integral part of my future career in nursing. I wish the Board the best of luck in selecting a replacement for Jessie Hughes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the first question is, what specific skills would you bring to the board?
I work really well with others. I can get along with just about anyone, so I'm definitely a team player. And because I just graduated from Highland Park schools, I would definitely, like, know what needs to be fixed in Highland Park, and I sort of know how everything works, so... And I know the students that go to the schools at this point, so I know what people would want, and people would feel comfortable going to me and asking me questions.
Okay, and just to fix the microphone if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. The second question is, what areas would you like to strengthen in our district?
I definitely think that there are a lot of strengths to going to a small school, like the small class sizes, but that also provides like a weakness because we don't have as many resources as other schools, so I would definitely like to work with the Board and maybe like, maybe adapting our... I guess, adapting the best to our ability to create more opportunities for our students. And I guess that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's eight thirty-three.
Yeah, so, where am I? I move the Board of Education recess into executive session at eight thirty-four to discuss candidates for the Board of vacancy position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. Someone needs to move...
Yes, Dan just asked me to make a motion for number nine. Yes, I'd like to reconvene into public session at eight twenty-one, nine twenty-one.
Second. Ms. Versa?
She's not here.
Okay, Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Sorry.
At this point, I'd like to seek a nomination for the new board member. Would someone like to nominate someone for this position?
I move that the Board of Education elect Ashley Wharton as interim board member from March 24th, 2014 through December 31st, 2014.
Okay, well, we actually need to vote on a nomination first.
I'd like to nominate...
Is there a second for the nomination of Ashley Wharton?
Second.
Zurney, Linda?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Now, we need a motion for the appointment of Ashley Wharton. Are there any other nominations, I should say? My apologies. Okay, I'd like to ask if there are any... If anyone... Someone would please make a motion for the appointment of Ashley Wharton as interim board member. From the period of March 24th, 2014 to December 31st, 2014.
I do. I'll make a motion to appoint Ashley Wharton from March 24th to...
December 31st.
I'm sorry?
December 31st.
December 31st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
So with that, we'd like to... Welcome Ashley Wharton to the Highland Park Board of Education. And thank you very much to all the other candidates. As you know, it was a very difficult deliberation, but congratulations, Ashley.
Are there any agendas left? We need to do a swearing-in.
Okay.
So, I don't have extra agendas. I'll put them on. Okay, so, Mr. Wharton, I'm going to ask you to read along with me or after me the required oath for school board members. I'm going to ask you to print your name and sign two copies and return one of them to me. I will sign one... I will sign both of them also. Okay? You're going to need to grab that microphone and bring it close. Okay? Okay, just repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
Under authority of the people...
Under authority of the people. Under authority of the people.
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
And I do affirm that I do possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of a member of a Board of Education.
For the office of a member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
I take this oath of office notwithstanding that results of the criminal history background investigation are not yet available.
I take this oath of office notwithstanding that results of the criminal history background investigation are not yet available.
And acknowledge that I have a statutory obligation to submit my fingerprints for said criminal history background check.
And acknowledge that I have a statutory obligation to submit my fingerprints for said criminal history background check.
Just so everyone knows, that was required language because of the new law requiring that board members as well as staff be processed for criminal history background checks. I'd like to personally welcome Mr. Wharton to the Board of Education.
Tim?
I'm going to start with the student update.
So, last Friday's St. Patrick's Day dance was a huge success and student congress collected several hundred cans of food. Also, the class of 2015-2016 volleyball tournament a few weeks ago also went well. Hundreds of dollars were raised for the class. The Wizard of Oz musical will be playing March 27th, 28th, and 29th. Also, the Model UN team will be attending the Rutgers Model Congress Conference April 3rd to the 6th. Also, DECA will be sending 21 students to the national conference. Also, last week, the honor roll breakfast took place for the second marking period within the high school. 188 students were invited, which is about 40% of the student body population. And also, there will be a volleyball tournament on April 10th and DECA will also be there supporting the tournament to raise money for the national conference.
All right, thank you. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Soto and Ms. Asamoah for a teen center update.
Good evening, everyone. As I read the mission and vision statement of the teen center, I came across an American proverb embedded into the program description. It stated that it takes a village to raise a child. With that clarification that in modern society, particularly here at Highland Park, the village represents all of the people, entities, and programs working seamlessly together on behalf of the students we serve. It's an environment where adults provide a safe, comfortable environment where students feel supported, they feel accepted, and affirmed. A place where students can express themselves without being judged or ridiculed. After many conversations with Ms. Asamoah and collaborations with her staff, principals, cheating staff, paraprofessionals, the teen center is such a place. And therefore, we invite you, the community here at Highland Park, to continue being a part of this wonderful journey to enhance the life of a child. So the villages, each and every one of us, particularly those affiliated with the teen center, communicating, and planning, and implementing, and working together, and problem-solving, and reaching consensus, and dreaming possibilities, mending hearts, and building the human spirit. All with the purpose of truly making a difference in the lives of individuals, schools, and the homes here at Highland Park and abroad. Having said that, all of the emphasis and all of the work, the kids here at Highland Park are at the center of all they do, of collaborating and galvanizing an entire community, the school, and home, and the teen center on behalf of students. Now, we've been talking a lot, we've been having a lot of discussions about the current programs here at Highland Park, particularly those that are sponsored by the teen center. And those kind of conversations really have been evolved around the depth and breadth of the current functions of each and every member and the depth and breadth of the programs that are currently given to the kids. Of streamlining the information of communication, streamlining that process where all of the counselors, the teen centers, members, the principals, the parents, the kids, the social workers are all talking the same language. And if in the event there's a crisis, we all know exactly what to do because it's been communicated. We've had a lot of conversations about expanding our partnerships, a partnership that would, you know, bring additional revenues and funding of resources and of support for the kids. And also, we've been talking about how do we monitor success and effectiveness of the So, in having all of these conversations, we've also had a conversation on where do we go from here? And we certainly have wonderful programs today, but moving forward, we would like to enhance those programs. And so, we've used the following guiding questions to help that narrative. The one is, the programs that we're considering or the initiatives, are they going to be memorable? Is this the type of program that is going to be impactful in the life of kids, of a community? Is it a program that's going to be sustainable or this is just a one-shot deal? Can we continue doing it? Can we continue to fund it? And last but not least, is it replicable? Is it a program and initiative that we can teach others to do? And so, today, members from the teen center are going to share with you their added value. They're going to be talking about healthy youth development programs, preventive health services, employment assistance services, recreational activities, learning support, and referrals for our community. And so, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the director of the program, Elizabeth Asamoah, and her team.
Thank you, Mr. Soto, and thank you, the Board, and the community, and for all of you for being here. My name is Elizabeth Asamoah. I'm the director of the teen center. Tonight, I have with me Dr. Roth and I have with me Ms. Allshouse. At the appropriate time, you'll find them up here also explaining what we do to you. If you are a parent or an adult who has lived with an adolescent before or a teenager, you find that sometimes, no matter how good you are as a parent or as an adult, or no matter how much support you provide for them in their lives, is never enough. There are times when they're going to question your knowledge, your skills, as if you have never been a child their age before. And so, sometimes, you tell them what to do by trying to assist them, trying to help them to make decisions, but they doubt you. But then this same child goes to school and then you hope that in the process of them questioning whatever it is they are dealing with, that they will connect with a trusted adult that is going to appreciate and understand your values and try to guide your child in that way. And that is what the teen center represents. We may not have all the answers, but because we're not their parents, sometimes they do listen to us more than they may listen to you, even though you know them better than we do. The school-based teen center is part of a school-based program that was established in the state of New Jersey about 25 years ago. Our school-based program in Highland Park is about 12 to 13 years now in this community. So the teen center, out of about 603 approximately school districts in the state of New Jersey, there are approximately 90 or less school-based programs in this state. And Highland Park District is fortunate to be one of those schools or one of those districts with a school-based program. So we do provide a comprehensive program to all middle and high school students who attend Highland Park School District. We are managed by the Highland Park Board of Education and we are also funded by the New Jersey Department of Children and Families. We are strategically located between the middle school and the high school, thereby providing easy access for our students to come and engage with us. So what is our mission? Our mission is to collaborate with the school and the community and the parents, really, because we cannot do without the support that you provide for us, to provide structured and safe programming that support the personal, academic, and emotional success for all students. Remember, one of the goals of the Highland Park Board of Education is to provide, is to enhance well-rounded students. Our objective of this program is to provide a host of educational, preventive, supportive, and recreational services for the participants to develop their coping, negotiating, and decision-making skills. Skills that are very necessary for success in the 21st century. So what are some of our goals? Our goals are to promote healthy youth development and to provide learning support programs that align with the academic goals and objectives with Highland Park Community Board of Education. To provide teens with a safe and supportive environment where they will feel comfortable coming to talk to adults in a non-judgmental environment so that when they come in, they know we are going to listen to them, we are going to accept them, and they're going to be a part of the process, of the solution process. To facilitate a smooth and successful transition from adolescence to adulthood. I am sure those of us sitting here can appreciate that because growing up, we all went through bumps along the road, but then there was always somebody there, that memorable person, that teacher, that somebody in your life that helped you along the way. We also try to decrease incidences of high-risk behaviors among the teens and we to provide our participants with the skills to enhance their positive intra- and interpersonal relationships. And also, we encourage, strongly encourage, positive parent-child relationships. And that is why we accept consent forms first before we meet with your child unless it's a crisis situation. So the program staff, I am Elizabeth Asamoah, I've already introduced myself, I'm the program director, and my primary responsibility is to oversee and provide leadership to all aspects of the program. We have here Dr. Roth, who is our clinical psychologist, and he coordinates the counseling services and also provides supervision, clinical supervision to our counseling staff. Ms. Holman is not here, but she's our family support case manager. And then we have our doctoral-level students, psychology students, Ms. Allshouse is here, Ashley Allshouse, Mr. Eric Garfinkel, Jennifer Gerowitz, and Adam Herbert. We also have two master's-level social work interns, Samantha Silverman and also Michelle Vanstuck. And they provide individual, family, and group counseling and all other things that come with being an intern in the program. So our hours of operation, we are open from Monday to Friday from 7:30 to 5:00 p.m. and also on Mondays, Dr. Roth stays until 5:00 to provide family counseling. We are open all year round, we are 12-month employees.
Elizabeth?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot to, sorry, thank you. We are 12-month employees, so we are here all summer to meet with your students and we do provide summer programs too. So, the school-based model, this is what we do. And each of our programs have been designed to align with the school-based model. We are a one-stop-shop model. So we have mental health services, preventive health services, employment services, learning support, substance abuse prevention, pregnancy prevention, referral and community-based services, recreation, and the overall goal is for healthy youth development. So, with that said, I'm going to let Dr. Roth talk about some of the groups that we have.
All right, so like Ms. Asamoah had stated, that the goals in the previous slides, we try to address them in multiple ways. So, one of the ways we try to address it is through our group services. So you'll notice a variety of different groups that focus on everything from anger management to male and female support groups and empowerment groups, groups to help with transition, whether it's to college or into high school from middle school. We have support groups like a grief and loss group. We do a group to help our international students transition. We have job readiness groups. We have a leadership group at the high school level, organizational skills group, our safety ambassadors, which is a group that goes to Bardell and Irving and helps teach the elementary school-aged kids different objectives with safety. We have the straight and gay alliance group. Our smart girls and our spice girls groups are the middle school and the high school female empowerment group, our staff group, and our united in prevention group. In addition to the group services that we offer our students, we offer a variety of individual and family counseling services. So I figured what we do is we take you from an initial referral that we get from either a parent, a self-referral, or a teacher or an administrator, and kind of walk you through the process of what that looks like. Like Ms. Asamoah said, we, in order to engage a student in any kind of counseling, we need to obtain consent first. So, right from the beginning, we engage the family and the parents in this process, explaining where the referral came from, why the referral came to us, get some background information on the student, and then go through what the consent procedure will be. We try, our counselors then take a history and an intake that will get the really presenting issues, will talk to the referral source, will do an initial screening. Early on, in the process of counseling, we do an assessment. Some of this comes from that intake information, it comes from teacher information, it can come from a parent, but also from the student. Some of it's more formal assessment, some of it's a little bit more informal. At that point, we start designing treatment goals. What's the presenting issue and how are we going to relate that to what intervention strategies we use? And the goals can range everything from the different goals of the teen center before, academic support, building healthy relationships at home, social skills, anything that can foster that growth in school. Variety of treatments address these issues and our counselors are well-trained in implementing these kind of treatments. I'm going to skip to the end there because we do, as you saw there, we have six counselors outside of myself, Ms. Asamoah, Ms. Holman, that are interns, either doctoral-level students or masters of social work interns. So built into that is individual and group supervision. Each counselor meets with me for at least one hour per week for individual supervision and then there's an hour a week of group supervision. And being located so close to Rutgers, we have a really strong relationship with them where we bring in guest speakers from the psych department to do trainings on new innovations in treatment that we can, we can kind of transfer then to our work at the teen center. And then, once we've met those counseling goals, we hope to be able to terminate with the students, meaning, you know, allow them to move off. We're always available if they need it to continue their work, however, if treatment goals are met and the family's comfortable with it and the clinician is comfortable with it, we can terminate now. Our counselors are typically here for one year, so, you know, often if a referral comes in in September and they see them through June, there may be a chance that the treatment goals have not been met at that point in time. So we build in a process to either transfer the case to one of our full-time staff members or put in a transition plan in place where we can either start again in September with a different counselor or help them seek outside counseling if the need be. Okay, Ms. Allshouse can take over now?
So, in becoming a young adult, one major rite of passage is entering the workforce. So the teen center offers a variety of employment services that are designed to assist teens in gaining the tools and the resources that they need to successfully acquire and then maintain a job. So most recently, this past Friday, we had a career fair. We had 14 sites from the local community come and over 200 students attended. It was very successful. Again, we have a job book in the teen center where we keep postings of local job opportunities, try to maintain relationships with local community employment opportunities. And then we can do some kind of one-on-one work, maybe help with interviewing skills and just help students build what they need to successfully get a job. We had 14 sites from the local community come, and over 200 students attended it, it was very successful. Again, we have a job book in the teen center where we keep postings of local job opportunities, try to maintain relationships with local community employment opportunities, and then we can do some kind of one-on-one work, maybe help with interviewing skills, and just help students build what they need to successfully get a job. And then also, being a school-based program, we offer a variety of learning support services that are designed to provide students with programs that align with the district's academic goals and objectives. So we offer SAT courses for 11th graders to help them get the confidence and the skills to perform to their best of their ability on the SATs. We do college tours of local colleges so that they can really get the experience of being on a college campus. We offer a freshman summer transition program and our welcome academy for incoming sixth graders.
Substance abuse prevention. So the purpose of our substance abuse prevention program is to promote drug-free and healthy lifestyle for all our students. And so as such, we implement certain programs to decrease students' risk of current and future dependence on drugs and alcohol. We are a prevention program, and we focus on, and also we collaborate to make, to provide certain programs for our students. So some of the things we've done in the past are Project Graduation, where we take our 12th graders after graduation night to a location, and, you know, they have fun, they spend all night, and we bring them back in the morning. We have Wellness Day, we have health educators in the classrooms talking to students, we do classroom presentations, we also have school-wide assembly to address, you know, substance use and prevention, and we also refer students who are using or who have expressed anything to us outside for the intervention services that they may need. Our referral access to healthcare and social services. So we do this, the goal is to provide resources to families or students who may be experiencing temporary hardships due to a job loss, a life, a major life change, or any other unplanned situations that may put the family in need to receive services, such as financial assistance, or we also may connect them with a community agency, there are so many community agencies, and I want to thank them all really for collaborating with us. We also give our Thanksgiving gift cards on Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving, for our families who may need to buy food or to provide for their families. We also give holiday gift cards during our winter break. So if anybody, if you know anybody who's in need, they have to contact their teacher or a school administrator or a guidance counselor or a child study team member for referral. We do have after-school programs. Once again, we're trying to help with their, provide well-rounded students. So recreation, we have our ping-pong club, we have our volleyball club, our badminton club, our dance club, and we also have open recreation for students such as myself who may not know or may not have any particular interest in anything or are not very athletic, but just want to be there to hang out. We also have clubs, we have our philosophy club, and if you've been there, if you've visited one of those, I mean, one of our sessions, you would think it's a college class. The students are so amazing, it's a student-led group. We also have our art club, and they are very good at what they do. Also, some of our after-school programs involve family counseling, like I said earlier, that is provided by Dr. Roth. I keep forgetting to push the paper, forgive me.
All right, so we also offer a variety of field trips that can either complement the learning that the students have in the classroom or just enrich their experience in middle school and high school. Most recently, I went last week to the Franklin Institute with a group of middle schoolers, and I love that place, it was great, and the kids seemed to really have a blast. But, you know, we tried to build this in, again, so we can not only give these kids these opportunities, but as a staff that does a lot of work within mental health, we like for them to see us in another light, so they won't feel the stigma of maybe seeking that help when and if and when they need it. We also run a variety of school-wide events, just going to go through some of them. In the very beginning of the year, we go to the homerooms and the PE classes to do presentations about our services, so the kids are well-aware of what the teen center does and how to seek help if they need it. We do a mental health awareness day in order to help decrease the stigma of seeking help. We did a World AIDS Day commemoration, we have a variety of volunteer opportunities that we try to engage the students in. We take students to our Young Women's Conference, we do personal hygiene and kind of puberty lessons in the sixth-grade gym classes for students and health classes, we do a Red Hand Day commemoration, which brings attention to the plight of child soldiers, we do a Denim Day, and we do teen pregnancy prevention programs. We also have a variety of family events to engage the community and to help you guys understand what we do in the teen center. We have an ice cream social, which is ice cream. We have a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, a multicultural dinner, we just had our Valentine's Day party, which we maxed out the middle school cafeteria, it was very successful. We have a ladies' night out at the end of the year where we bring together women and their female role models to come join, and then we do the same thing for guys' night out, which we invite all male students in the district and their male role models to come out and have a night out of entertainment and positive messages.
So you talked about what we do, we've talked about what we do, but let's hear about what the students have to say about the teen center. Every year, some of the students participate in a survey, and this is what they think of the teen center. They view the teen center as a safe, helpful, great, calm, fun, happy, interesting, amazing, okay, comfortable, and a fine place. They also, so we asked, what did you like the least about the teen center? Nothing. I can't take two snacks. We give them snacks when they come to group, and some people want more than one. They become concerned too quickly. How can I see my counselor once per week? And in their own words, what does the teen center mean for the kids, the students? My overall impression of the teen center is that it's very helpful when you have a problem outside of school or in school. My impression is that it's a place that is open for children who need a place to talk, and that it is trying to help children who have problems with bullying, stress, body image, et cetera. I love the teen center, effective and helps many people. The willingness of the staff to help made my high school experience great. So in conclusion, I just want to talk about a program or some of the discussions that I've had with Mr. Soto. We do have a summer program for incoming ninth graders every year, and this year, based on many discussions with Mr. Soto, we have decided to enhance it, to make some changes, and to include a leadership component. So at some point, parents will be receiving brochures about it, informing you of how we have changed the program, and hopefully, you know, the students will attend, or they will have a wonderful time. I want to thank you, the board, again, and I want to thank all of you for this opportunity. Thank you, and have a good evening.
I think we'll have a few questions, yeah.
You can ask questions.
First, Elizabeth, let me, no, Ms. Asamoah, let me say what a wonderful job that you've done since we've hired you. I remember when we were voting to hire you and where you came from, and it was exciting from the programs that you did at your old job and how you would bring them here, and it looks like from the presentation that you gave us tonight, you've done that with the help of your team and Israel and the administration with amazing colors, and I definitely want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have a question about the referrals, to start with. Who is responsible for getting to you the referrals? Is it mostly the parents, teachers, members of the community? Who, how do you find new students?
Yes, so what we do, at the beginning of the school year, we go into the gym classes to promote our services. So that's how we get our referrals, and also, students can self-refer or their friends. Sometimes a friend will bring a friend down and say, my friend was crying. Teachers refer, school administrators, parents call us, and we do get a, and sometimes what we do, we see a kid out in the hallway crying, we pull them in, and then we get a referral that way, so.
Are all the programs that you offer open to all of our students, or is it only an identified student?
It's open to all of our students, yes. Six to 12th grade.
Six to 12th grade.
Correct.
That's great. And then I guess my final question is, you know, we eliminated the SAC coordinator. Have you seen an increase in the amount of students who are coming to your, to the teen center for drug-related and other related concerns?
You know, I guess because the SAC was here, we were never really a part of the intervention services, however, we were a part of the prevention services. I know there has been some sort of increase, but we have not really been a part of it.
And you're able to meet that, those needs and those concerns of those students?
We do not provide intervention, like I said. So in fact, I met with the team, and we decided that if we get any new cases of, you know, kids who have been using, that we'll refer them out. So we are trying to collect resources in the community of places where they can go to receive counseling or whatever other support the families may need.
Well, then I will leave you with that recommendation, that that should be our next step and our next area of interest of how do we really work with those students who do have an identified need and where we can, where your organization can help them. So, but besides that, besides that, I think your whole team is doing such an amazing job, and I know many of the students who have come out and spoken, you know, really attribute a lot of their successes in life to many of the programs offered by the teen center. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I just want to echo Adam's sentiments, and I think that, you know, the relationship that's, you know, clearly built with Rutgers and those other sorts of things, I think it's great. The resources that we have, both to train, you know, counselors-to-be and also to have those experiences with the students is amazing. And I work in Piscataway, in Piscataway we have The Haven, which is a similar program, but, you know, I know that these programs are really far, few and far between, and so, like Adam said, I want to thank you for your work. I think the updated brochure is really great, it's really thorough, I think it should be something that should be, you know, distributed immediately at the beginning of school if it's not already, but certainly made available so that all the students in the schools, those two schools are aware of the services. So, thank you again.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Well, I just wanted to add, from my understanding, mostly all, if not all, of your funding is federally funded and does not come out of our general fund budget.
No, it does not, yes, it's federally funded, correct.
I think that that's great, it's a great program that I hope we can continue to receive the funding for it, because I would not want it to seagull.
Thank you, we do hope so too, that's why we work so hard to meet that level of service and to meet the program requirements, so that, you know, they will always continue to fund us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I actually wanted to start, Mr. Lassiter was at the last meeting and, you know, made, I think, some really good points and, you know, agreed to come forward and actually talk about his experience in the district and what he saw some of the needs are and how that impacts the direction that we're going. So we're actually going to start with Mr. Lassiter.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. Thank you, board, thank you, parents, community, teachers, students. I welcome this opportunity. Technology in our district is something I feel very passionate about, and I guess I opened my mouth at the tech committee and said the right thing, so I appreciate the invitation here to really address this issue. I came to the district 20 years ago, in 1994, and I interviewed for a social studies position at that time, and Ms. Rosenfeld was sitting in that committee of eight people, including parents, students, members of the community, faculty members, the principal, and I must have said something right, because they asked me what the ideal social studies class would look like. And I spoke to active citizens, I spoke to multicultural views and debating and discussing those, and reaching out to other communities in the world to really be able to engage in civic conversations. Two years later, I was writing a course called Global Issues, and the district was paying me to do so. And that course developed over the years into something that was a project-based learning course with a Model UN component that really took off. The problem is, after 12 years of doing it, I began to become very frustrated. The course was focused on distance learning, the course was focused on being able to reach out to the countries that students were actually trying to represent and try to speak firsthand to members of the UN, but we couldn't do it. We didn't have the technology to support the program. The software that I originally purchased for the course in 1996 was all I had. The internet failed consistently. The computers, the RAM, would clog up anytime the students wanted to do a real presentation with all kinds of images. So now, our teachers are facing trying to close an achievement gap with an almost 40% free and reduced lunch rate and not having the technology to really provide to all those students who don't have it at home. They face core content standards like Social Studies 6.3 that actually is entitled Active Citizenship in the 21st Century, and a standard that specifically says 6.3.8.8.3, collaborate with international students to deliberate about and address issues of gender equality, child mortality, or education. How can our students do that with what they have in our schools? We try, and we try hard. Last year, we Skyped with a former student, Highland Park alumni, who was in the Peace Corps and working in Mexico. Unfortunately, that Skype session kind of crashed midway through, and we were able to boot it up again and get the kids back interested in it. This year, at our Diversity Day celebration, we were listening to The Descendant of Booker T. Washington and Frederick Douglass. Unfortunately, that Skype session was reduced to a conference call, and I don't think Mr. Mlandic's here, but I was very grateful that he could very quickly hook up a conference call, and we could at least hear the man, and the students could ask him questions. We've had successful Skype sessions with our former media specialist, Janet Williams, who is now in South Africa, and the kids did speak to students in the South African classroom, and that was one of those situations where it worked. Right now, we have our Spanish teachers, Tara Givenerian and Joe Campos, working with the help of Dr. Mary Kern at Rutgers, doing a video exchange with a sister school in Mexico, and it's working wonderful. I just got feedback today that the principal of this sister school was just floored, and the presentation happened when his director was there, and it was just so well-received. Again, another one of those success stories, but they're unfortunately few and far between. Because every time that our teachers want to expand the technology in their classroom and do more with their kids, they can't. We face, as a focus school, a technology requirement. The regional achievement centers come in, and actually, when they do their walkthroughs, are looking for our teachers to be using technology in the classroom. We affectionately call them the RAC, and I guess you can understand why. It's very stressful that you can't meet the standard that the state keeps asking you to do and your teachers to make in their classroom. But we're working on it, we differentiate learning as much as we can. We have wonderful programs available to the students, BuzzMath and our online textbooks. We have a teacher, Gina Donatov, our computer teacher, ready to do a Google Apps training for all of our teachers so that they can expand their understanding of our small Chromebook cart that we have, thanks to winning a contest last year, okay? And we appreciate that, and we're using it as much as we can. But there's been teachers that have signed it out, and when they signed it out, unfortunately, the wireless is down on the third floor, and they can't do the lesson in their classroom. We have a teacher that's gone so far, Ms. Ford, as to videotape herself, because she was so afraid with all the snow days that the students were missing math instruction, so she has little three-minute videos that they can watch at home. We have another teacher, Ms. Boffenek, who, when she has a Google cart, loves it, the kids are able to collaborate and write these wonderful essays together. One of our special ed teachers, Ms. Todros, wrote me an email that I immediately shared with everyone, because her kids were writing a lab report that was so sophisticated and collaborating on it up on the smartboard using the Chromebooks that she had to share. These are the stories I want to hold on to. These are the- These are the stories we need to be able to share every day if our kids are actually going to be active participants in the 21st Century.
Thank you, Mike.
So, over the course of the last couple of months, we've actually had the approvals for upgrading the legs between the buildings so that there's a higher speed coming into Bartle and Irving. We've upgraded the speed overall so that it'll now be three times the speed that we've had before. And so the next piece, you know, we've talked extensively about the hardware, about the fact that we have a number of the old Apples and we have computers that are running XP and that, you know, based on, you know, the numbers that the technology department has put together, that 567 of our computers are really obsolete come the end of this year. So, we had put forward a plan and having a conversation as far as what are some of these needs and what are some of the practices that we already have. As you've heard, Mr. Lassiter, we already have some carts, and this has been a request that we've heard from teachers as far as having more as well. So, again, the technology plan goals: to attain educational technology and information skills to achieve standards and succeed in the 21st Century workplace; have educators that attain skill to assist students to achieve the standards; students, teachers, and administrators will have access to technology in offices, classrooms, the media centers; and that the school district will continue to improve the infrastructure for students and educators to access information and communicate. Why are we doing this? To promote collaboration, to acquire 21st Century skills, active student engagement, interaction and feedback, connection to real-world technology, and access to information on the World Wide Web. What? We can now move into online learning. We can have project-based activities, game-based learning and assessments, learning with multiple devices, instructional tools, web-based projects. This is just the beginning. You know, really, this is about putting it into teachers' hands and they will find ways to use it. As Mr. Lassiter has talked about, right now, you know, I'm sure if we, you know, by getting these computers, there will be more opportunities for these students to be actively engaged and for teachers to find ways to use them than we currently have listed here. Again, some of our priorities that we've been working on that are going to be enhanced by this technology: the project-based learning, differentiating instruction, iterating technology across the curriculum, student research. I had a number of conversations with the teachers at the high school as far as, again, same kind of stories. When they get their Chromebooks, it's a great opportunity, but they've had failures either with the hardware or with the internet signal. Being able to publish using the file folders where they can submit it electronically, having the accounts set up for the students. Keyboarding skills, Google applications, presentations, Skype, e-textbooks. This is going to open up a whole new opportunity for us as far as how it is that our students communicate and how they interact within their classes. So, we had set forward that we needed more Chromebooks or that we needed more computers. The model, I'm going to bring Brian down to speak as far as what the specifics are and why it is that that was the recommendation as far as those details. But when we're looking at the upgrades, going into media centers, putting them into classrooms where teachers have access to them on a daily basis, that they can run centers with them within the elementary schools, that they have classroom sets at the middle school and high school. So we broke down just what are some of the needs, and again, this is not the end, this is the beginning. You know, right now, we're looking at these laptops or any computers that you're buying with the speed and the change of technology, we're looking at a three to five years. That's what we're likely to get. And if you remember back, we've talked about the fact that we have computers that are 15 years old. And, you know, the kind of having 400 that actually work within the district as opposed to the number of them that can't access sites is going to be a dramatic upgrade for us. We're looking at, besides the Chromebooks, besides getting more laptops and computers, also interactive technology, smartboards, Elmos, having other ways to communicate, to be able to save that information. That would be the next stage. How do we make the classroom more interactive? How do we make it, make students more active within their learning? And, you know, ideally, a one-to-one initiative where we would be able to outfit, you know, technology. And again, when we're talking about the price of what this equipment is, this was the most efficient model that we could get to try and get this in immediately, knowing again that this is something that has to be constantly upgraded. With a $35,000 budget that we've had for the last number of years, it's just not sufficient. We had the technology plan, which we discussed before, and the fact that, you know, this is where, you know, it wasn't necessarily that the plan is bad, but it's the fact that it wasn't funded. So, Brian, I guess if you would come down and talk a little bit about the models and about, you know, why the Samsung?
We picked the Samsung Chromebook mainly because of the cost factor. I know that it seems a little underpowered to some people at 2GB of RAM. There is a feature on it called ZRAM that we can engage should we start seeing problems that are involving many, many tabs being opened all at the same time. But this is probably the least expensive way we can get this technology into the classrooms, and the Samsung has a record of being durable. I know there were a few people that talked about ACERS and a few other machines. Long-term, I haven't seen any real studies, aside from anecdotal items, that say that the ACERS are really a resilient machine for classroom use. So, that was the reason I chose the Samsung. I'm standing on that, and I'm going to say we're still going to use the Samsung for this purpose. The cost of the Acer that was recommended to us is another $10,000 higher than the budget that we've allocated for this. So it is sort of prohibitive in terms of cost. Any questions? Yes?
Is this an example?
This is the exact machine.
I see, okay.
If there are questions for Brian, certainly, otherwise, we can, you know, we can direct the conversation back to Tim.
Well, one of my questions, when Mr. Lassiter was talking about some of the experiences they had in the middle school on the, I heard him talk about using the Chromebooks on the third floor and seeing the wireless cut out.
Yeah, we have to overbuild the third floor. We have had occurrences up there where we have clusters of not only Chromebooks but laptops in directly adjacent classrooms, where they've got 75 laptops in there. One of the things that we're doing right now that's going to go a long way toward remediating the problems we're having is that I'm locking down all the networks. The high school, middle school is the first one that I'm locking down. We have what, a lot of what I like to refer to as rogue traffic out there, a lot of iPhones, iPads, a variety of other items out there that aren't part of our network, but they are logging in and they are taking up bandwidth at the same time. So, we're going to be adding more wireless access points, and we're going to be locking down the network. And I'm in the process of creating the lockdown now.
When you say you're going, I mean, if you don't have an answer right now, but is that part of, I didn't see anything with wireless access points on this agenda. Is this something in the budget for?
The, two presentations ago, when I talked about the $137,000 or $136,000 being an ongoing cost for network upgrades, that overbuild for the wireless access points is part of that cost.
Do we have this thought? I guess, did we approve that, or is this something that's pending, going on our agenda?
There's no, there's no moment-by-moment plan to do this where we've got a determination that says we're going to spend exactly that amount of money.
Okay, so there's nothing?
So I'm going to overbuild certain areas. I mean, areas like this, which have relatively no wireless coverage, this needs an access point. It will be getting one.
Okay, ongoing.
There's money in next year's budget, or potentially, I would think. What are we using to secure the internet?
We're going to be using Web 2 encryption as far as the wireless. As far as the security on the internet, that's from our firewall.
Does it require a sign-in?
It requires, it requires the first-time sign-in.
First-time sign-in, okay.
And we'll be visiting each one of the teacher laptops. We're setting up all of the individual laptops in the carts, including the Chromebooks that we presently have, to accommodate the password-protected login.
How does that prevent an iPhone or an iPad from signing in?
Because they will not be able to get past that gateway without having a password on that device.
So one student, each student will have one password? Or you're only, you're only going to be given passwords?
This is not, this is not a personal password. This is a password just to access the wireless network in the same way you would normally have that engaged at home.
So how does that impact or bring your own policy?
We're going to have to visit each device individually to find out whether it's a bona fide device that belongs on the network. Right now, it's been more or less like the Wild West. Everybody brings something. Even devices that aren't really part of the network scheme that would be in the classroom are capturing traffic.
You're preaching to the choir here. I put it, I put it in the policy so we could get something like this done, you know. So you're, do you have the infrastructure, though, to, you know, when a student brings in their form, to put the password on that computer?
Right now, we have approximately, just at the high school, middle school alone, we have approximately 350 rogue devices on the network.
Okay.
It's just a guess on my part, but I would say probably 2/3rds of those do not belong on our network.
Right.
And they're utilizing bandwidth that we don't have to spare.
And I guess, just even to go a little bit further, so, you know, the other thing is that the iPhones are typically set to default to the Wi-Fi.
Yeah, they default to the Wi-Fi. So no matter who brings one in, it captures bandwidth on our network.
As I've said before, I'm all for securing the internet and giving an individual password to an individual student, having the software to monitor that, those accounts.
When we can get there.
Yeah, that's, that's $50 per device per year, depending on how many devices you'd like to handle out there. It can get quite costly.
I don't know, this might be a question more for you, Tim, although I'll ask you the question, and you can defer if you feel like you have to. The Chromebooks that are ultimately going to be discussed later on the agenda tonight, these are Chromebooks. They're Google OS, right?
That's correct.
So they're very, they're very limited in terms of their functionality. I mean, limited in the sense that they're, they're a browser-based application. They don't have Microsoft Office, they're not a Windows PC.
They have access to Google Drive, which has a sharing component to it.
Right, the Google Apps.
If students are out there using it, yes.
Yeah, right.
But Google Drive has word processing database spreadsheet and a presentation component to it.
No, I understand.
Which allows students to have sharing sessions with their teachers and others throughout the community.
Okay, but I mean, my question is that everybody is clear on the fact that these are not Microsoft commercial software machines. These are machines that are using the Google apps that are, I mean, I guess that's commercial, but it's, it's a different brand of software that you're using.
That's correct. I mean, if the criteria is just about Microsoft Office, I mean, we're talking about being able to save something as an Office-style document or even as a .doc, .docx if we need to, to bring it back out again and put it into Microsoft Office somewhere else. But the, what we're gaining here with having one application handling all of our students is that everything can be commingled. We don't have to worry about multiple formats across the board.
Okay. And you talked about Skype before. This is me being completely dumb and dense about Google Chromebooks. Skype is an application that is available on Chromebooks?
As far as I know, yes. But I have to go back and look.
Is, it is?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I have a bunch of questions about the presentation and the goals and the stages. So I'm guessing that's a Tim question?
Yes.
Do we want to?
Yeah, let's.
I'll ride along.
Yeah. So maybe let's circle back to Tim on this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, I think, I have some questions about how we came to these, these numbers. I know we had a tech committee, the makeup of that, the makeup of that committee and the tasks that we put forth to that committee and how the recommendations today were informed from conversations at that committee.
So what is your question?
My question is how, what was the, what discussions took place in the technology committee that we had two meetings of, and what were the recommendations from the parents that were attending and the teachers?
So my understanding from the first committee was that they revisited the plan, that there was a conversation in reference to the plan that it was, how it was written, and because that was what the board wanted, was a review of the plan of whether or not this was adequate. What came out of that meeting and was relayed back to me, that it was less about an issue of the plan and more about the fact that it wasn't funded. And so, when you're talking about, you know, what the steps, again, I haven't heard anybody or very few people say that we don't need technology within the district, that this hasn't been a need. And so then the question became, okay, if we've put together, this is the plan, what's the, kind of the next step? So, in coming back, there wasn't a question, and again, I mean, Mr. Lassiter was at the second meeting, I don't know if he wants to address that, but, you know, again, my understanding was that this, again, was not about, this is, you know, it was really based on the fact that this is the beginning, that we need significantly more than that, that there were conversations branching out into presentation technology. You know, what are the other things that we need, where again, we're talking about a limited budget, you know, this money is money that we recaptured throughout the year to even fund something along these lines, because there was $35,000 in the budget. So, when we're looking at next year's budget and we're talking about what those needs are, that's really the time to have the technology and have the committee get back together and say, if we've allocated this amount of money within the budget, what should we be purchasing, why, and what's going to be the application? Right now, again, with the shortage that we have of hardware within the district, you know, this, again, this is just the beginning. This is going to be the first purchase of many computers that we need as we move forward. As I stated before, this is not even covering the ones that are becoming obsolete.
So I guess my question, I guess my comment then is, where do we start? And it seems like we're not ready to start at this spot yet with 400 Chromebooks. And I actually, I like your Phase 2 first, and then, you know, the Chromebooks. It seems like right now, you said that we're going to be having these Chromebooks and then we, that the teachers are going to pick it up and use them. But there's no guarantee that that is actually going to happen. And there's been no professional development towards those teachers yet. So do I want to buy 400 Chromebooks? Absolutely. There is no question in my mind that I think I've been the biggest advocate for technology on this board. I've been speaking about it for years, and I think it's one of the largest needs that we have. But I want it to be done in a thoughtful way, which we involve the teachers, the community, and the administration to really figure out where we want to start and where we want to end. And starting with 400 Chromebooks, as much as I believe we do need them, I see much better places for the money, including projectors in every, projectors in every room, including a model, like a Moodle or a virtual classroom software that we spend the, you know, X number of dollars per kid per licenses for the rest of the year. But at the end of the day, I also agree with your vision of bringing the budget, technology budget to 1% of the overall budget. I just want it to be done in a thoughtful and planned way, and I don't think that we're there yet. And I, I'm going to, I'm going to hear from, from Mike, what you have to say. I'm going to hear from what Tim has to say from last night, I'm going to hear from what Kim has to say and what the community has to say. But right now, I'm inclined to not support the Chromebooks tonight, and I'm thinking, and I want to find a better way to use the money.
So let me speak to our existing laptop carts first. The battery life is less than an hour. They weigh, oh, 500 pounds at least, and I watched Ms. Boffenek, and I literally, and I don't mind at all, but I have to help her get it to her classroom often, or I watch her strain herself do that. I see the teachers doing that all the time. We have four of those carts. They're all in disrepair, and our tech people, Mr. Humphrey and his assistants, Ms. Parsons and Mr. Gartner, they work very hard to try to keep those things working. But if we spend money on projectors and we spend money on presentation tools for the teachers, that's fantastic stuff. But what we get looked at as, for a middle school, is how much our students are actually using the technology in the classroom. They need it in their hands. They need to be able to work with it. And the stuff that we have, unfortunately, often fails, so they get frustrated and they can't do the collaborative things that the teachers want to do. I can't speak to 400 Chromebooks for the entire district. I can absolutely speak to whatever would go into the middle school and high school, knowing that our students will use it, knowing that our teachers will use it in the classroom if the internet is all upgraded as it's being done over spring break. So with the speed and the functionality that we should have with that, the teachers will be able to do so much more. Do they all want smartboards in their classroom? Absolutely. Would they prefer to have those small, little laptop carts? Would they prefer to have those small little laptop carts with Google Chromebooks on them? I think so. And in fact, many of them said, please just give me four or five computers for my classroom so I can differentiate for those students who will benefit from using that technology for short periods of time.
I have an issue in that in itself, and you know from when we were, when we were in school, to get, when you were my teacher and in, in school, that there were four, that we bought four computers to the back of the classroom of every classroom in high school. They were never used. They were rarely used.
No, they were used in my class.
They were, might have been used in your classroom, but you, as you've said, you know, you've had, you, you, you focused on it. But for the majority, you know, we bought for math, like, they, they just sat there the whole time.
So one of the things that we've done is on May 12th, we have a planned training session with our full middle school, high school faculty to work on the Google apps and to understand them better, to prepare them for what may be coming, hopefully would be coming, so that they can actually then better use them. Most of the faculty in the high school has already been trained on the Google platform. The middle school never got that training. We've been piecemealing it and just expecting that everyone uses it as much as possible. To speak to Microsoft and everything, when I send something out in Word, because I have an updated version at home, teachers can't read it. When I upload it to Google Drive, they can all read it, and they have access to that. The students are super excited with their actual HBschools.net accounts, and they say, oh, Google's so much easier, and they can collaborate with it at home and in school, whereas they can't do that as easily when they're, have an Apple computer or a Windows computer at home. They can through Google.
Right.
Okay, so all those things are wonderful opportunities that our teachers are chomping at the bit, ready to use.
Well, I'm gonna make my last two statements, and I'll allow, allow other board members to speak. You know, there's not a part of this presentation that I disagree with in its philosophy. You know, I want to end it a one-to-one program. You know, I'm a graduate student, I woke up at 7:00 AM to go with Mark, Mark Weiss to his school to look at, to look at the, you know, to look at what they're doing in their district. I, I've asked the administration, and I've asked other people to go and see what other, other.
Can I speak to that for a second?
Yeah.
Mark is still here in the audience? I don't know if he is.
Yes.
Mark, I told him specifically, I almost arranged to visit. I said, you know what, Mark? I can't go and see Disneyland and come back to Highland Park fearing we won't have a chance to be there. Okay? So I actually said to Mark, I can't visit your school until I know we can have the tools for our teachers so that I can see how they can best be used.
But that's what I want. I want you to have that presentation before we decide on 400 Chromebooks.
I will go tomorrow if you want me to, and you tell me to, so I can visit West Windsor to see what they're doing. But I'm sorry, I won't go if I don't think it's going to be a reality.
Right.
Because I'm not going to waste my time.
I, I get that. But what I saw did not waste my time. I saw teachers who were piloting programs. I want to do that here. Before I spend $400,000 on Chromebooks, I want, you know, teachers to, I want teachers to have the, the education to pilot the programs and not, you know, I truly believe we're doing an if you build it, they will come philosophy right here. We're doing a Field of Dreams philosophy. We're buying all these Chromebooks and kind of saying, we're going to give you these now here, you know.
Wonderful movie, and it ends with a very hopeful message, because they do come.
They do. But...
I have to, I mean, from the, from the curriculum committee, there's been a lot of conversation about the rewrite of all the curriculum. Basically, I mean, K-8 has been the primary focus. High school is sort of on its way. But the primary, you know, the, the direction of the curriculum and the way that it's written is really project-based, it's really hands-on, it's really about differentiation. When you were, when you were in school, when I was in school, when people 10 years older than me were in school, every, all of those stages, they were very different learning environments. We, we, you know, graphing calculators on AP exams was a really big deal when I was in high school. Texas Instruments, you know, basically got the college board to force them to be on the AP calculus exam, and it was a huge deal. Right? And now we talk about graphing calculators like, you know, like they're incredibly common. The paradigm that we're now entering into is really a much more interactive kind of environment, where we want to promote that kind of technology use with our students. And the, the curriculum is going to be piloted, as far as I understand, this year, in May. In April and May, there's going to be curriculum that the teachers will be building, and those teachers are going to have a really good, positive, hands-on opportunity to pilot the curriculum this year, to use those computers, to share with their colleagues before it goes into, you know, full implementation in September, about how they used it, what things they found valuable, what things didn't work, how do you get more student engagement? And if we've got those devices, as Mr. Lassiter said, we can then start exploring. You're talking about piloting things, right? We need to have the ability to, to do that.
That's one or two carts that we have, but go.
But, but you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, there's a lot of comparisons with West Windsor-Plainsboro. West Windsor-Plainsboro is very far ahead. Very, very far ahead. They have extraordinarily different socioeconomics, right? And, you know, it's a very different place.
But they started it.
They, they started somewhere, and now we're starting somewhere. And where we go from here is really going to be, you know, the, the community, it's going to be the board, it's going to be the administration, it's going to be the teachers, and it's going to be the vision and the, the aptitude that they can gain from it, and the things that, that they think are going to be valuable for student learning. And, you know, I mean, I think, I, I understand, and I would say that as, as a board member, my primary concern in all of this, and the focus that I would have for, for Tim, and for Israel, and for the building principles, is that this remains a priority, that this is not just some machine that we end up using for park testing.
Right.
Right? But that this becomes something that is continually developed professionally, that there is ongoing training, that, you know, the, the ways in which other districts are using these devices is continually looked at, because we don't want to get stagnant. And, you know, the, the concern has been, oh, well, we're gonna, we're gonna buy these, and they're, and they're going to be $250 paperweights. And that's actually a legitimate concern.
Yep.
Right? If it's not, you know, tended to, if it's not minded. And, and as, as, you know, as someone who's comfortable moving ahead in this direction, that's the concern that I have. And, and I, and I'm sure that, you know, that's the, the administration, I'm sure doesn't want to purchase things that aren't going to be used, but I think that, you know, the, the sort of underlying concern from everybody here is that they be used, that they be used well, and that continuing innovation is always present in the minds of the people that are using them.
Well, and I think that's my concern, and I, I share that, and that's why I went to the second technology committee meeting, and I think that's what I was hoping to hear. I was hoping to hear that sense of collaboration, that sense of openness, that sense of, we're looking to other districts for best practices, not that we're trying to make ourselves West Windsor. Clearly, we're never going to be West Windsor. I don't think that's the, the point of going to visit a West Windsor. But I think the point of it is, is to get that collaborative sense. I feel like, from my perspective, two, two and a half months ago, we sat at this board table, and we talked about 400 Chromebooks. Now we're here again, talking about 400 Chromebooks. I haven't heard a lot of discussion between then and now as to how they're going to be used, what kind of program we're looking to implement. Those are the discussions I was hoping were going to come out of the technology committee with real, genuine input from folks like Ashley, who I know has technology experience from Mark, and that we came to, you know, I mean, the point to me of a committee is, you know, maybe you go in with an idea, but then somebody else presents another idea, and you collaborate, and you maybe end up somewhere different than when you started. We started at one place, we ended at the same place, and it seemed like it was a foregone conclusion, and the committee was just a formality. Personally, I would like to see more collaboration, I would like to see more voices at the table, I would like to feel like we have a clearer sense of where we want to end up. I asked very specifically at that meeting, so we're getting four Chromebooks per class, that's kind of how we got to this number. Do the teachers then share one of those Chromebooks with the students? Like, what does the teacher get? Because I've heard a lot from the teachers that that's a consideration, that we need to get something into the hands of the teachers too, so I'm not hearing that in this first phase. If we all sat together and really put our heads together, would we decide, okay, well, yes, we want X for teachers and Y for students, and, you know, is there some way with this pot of money that we have right now that we could meet a broader base of needs? So that's, that's the piece that I feel like has been missing and makes me extremely hesitant to just say, you know, say yes to 400 Chromebooks.
No.
I think one of my concerns, and I do agree with Darcy, that when I went to back-to-school night at the high school, and you walk in the classrooms and there's no computers, like, that's horrible. And the teachers, you know, they come and they're looking on their, their power school, and it's like, oh, is that your, is that the district computer? Oh, no, no, those don't work, was what the teachers would say. And they were using their own laptops. So I support the Chromebooks, certainly, because it's not a waste of money at all. But I would like to see something in there for teachers to have working computers, so they don't have to use their own devices.
I think...
And what I heard at that meeting also was, if I could, I'm sorry, Adam, was that, I believe Kim was just in the process of getting that survey out to the teachers the day that the technology committee, committee was meeting for the second time. I mean, I would certainly want that to be information that the technology committee had to move forward, you know, to move forward on the first steps.
You know, before I actually decide how I'm going to vote tonight, I, I am excited to hear from Kim and from, you know, the community. But I do want to also say about the points that YouTube brought up about the teachers getting computers. I'm not interested in buying teachers' Chromebooks. I would like to buy teachers', you know, more powerful computers that have word processing and have, you know, storage on the unit. So I would hope that if we are going down that route, and I, I think that we've all talked about putting technology in teachers' hands, that we come up with a different idea than Chromebooks to put in their hands.
Is there any other discussion about the technology presentation?
I would just say to that, while certainly if the teachers feel that they needed a more powerful device, I would say 98% of users of technology can get by with a device such as a Chromebook. Unless you're into heavy art design or really crunching a lot of powerful Excel spreadsheets, this kind of device can meet the majority of people's needs.
You know, I'm a Word guy, I grew up on Word. I would imagine many of our, I, I can't stand Google Docs to save my life, and that's just, that's just where I'm, where I am.
Technology moves along very fast. Two years is old.
Yeah. Got anything? Okay.
We'll have discussion more on the curriculum.
Indeed. Well, I, I guess the only point that I would make on this is that, you know, again, we're talking about this as a starting point. If you don't like this as a starting point, where do you want to start?
I want to start with projectors in every classroom is where I want to start.
You need laptops to run the projectors.
That's not what we've heard from, from the staff. That's not what I've heard from teachers. It's not what I've heard from the administration.
Okay. That's why I'm, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait until here from the administration, from the teachers and from the other community members before I make up my mind tonight. I am, it, it will kill me if I have to vote against 400 Chromebooks. I, I truly believe that we need more technology. I just think we have a certain amount of money and it's priorities that we have to set, and where we start is important to where we end.
Can I share one, one thing? I did survey the middle school faculty for their technology needs, and almost universally, they asked for a group of computers in their classroom, they didn't care what kind, or some kind of smart board in their classroom as well, so they could do better presentations. We have seven projectors in the school. Most of them are starting to live their life. One of them died recently beyond repair. The projectors are a nice thing, but again, that's just a teacher in front of the classroom making a presentation. That's not the students actually working with the device. So more of them would prefer computers in their classroom, which carts of Chromebooks would make happen.
What I would love to do tonight is, you know, kind of put out a, a declaration to our teachers, like a shoot, you know, you know, get, get me to the moon. What, what do you want to do to, to get me there? And come up with ideas on what kind of, what your classroom wants to look like. You know, when I was in Mark's, when I was in Mark's school, I saw a biology classroom that was completely self-taught by the students. That was a teacher, that was a teacher initiative. You know, we saw the one-to-one programs in fifth grade. Those were teacher initiatives, but they were piloted first. 400 Chromebooks is not a pilot. You know, one, you know, one or two classrooms is a pilot. You know, the other thing that, the other thing that I saw in, in West Windsor was they were doing, you know, research. You know, one, there, for one of their science classrooms, it was a scientific study. Students were randomly drawn to, if I'm understanding this correctly, students were randomly drawn to participate in a, in a one-to-one techno, bio class, and once, some students were, you know, participated, were, were chosen to be in a reg, in a regular general ed classroom. Those are the kinds of things that I would like to do to inform the decisions on 400 Chromebooks.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Thank you very much for your assistance in this conversation.
So, to inform this year's budget, we started with the information that we had gathered from the strategic plan. And so we made some statements based on as far as what it is that we want for our students and what it is that we want for the district. So, starting with an overall vision, that all students will be global citizens and have the skills and knowledge to be successful in an ever-changing world. All students will be provided diverse, high-quality, engaging educational opportunities that exceed the state standards. All students will have enhanced educational outcomes due to the staff using student-focused best practices. All students will be taught the skills that are necessary to be successful in an ever-changing 21st century environment. All students' instructional and social-emotional needs will be addressed through a fiscally responsible and efficient budget. And all students will be provided a safe and positive learning environment. So we started just by looking at, you know, kind of a historical perspective of the budget and where it's been over the years. So you can see that there have been concerns that have been raised throughout the year as far as a lack of resources within classrooms. And when we look at the historical reference to Irving, you can see that that budget has been decreased by 47.9% over the last four years. Okay? So it's practically been cut in half since the, the 2011 budget. Supplies? I'm sorry? Yes, school budgets. This is, this is the school budget.
Supplies?
It's everything within the school.
Not teachers. The curriculum materials.
Yes.
You're just...
At, at Bartle, there's been a 24.3% decrease. It was 74,000, it's been cut to 56,000. At the middle school, they only had a budget of 39,000 in 2011, and that's been reduced to 21.8% over the last four years. And at the high school, they had a budget of 218,000. They've seen a 26.5% decrease over the last four years to 160,000. So when we're looking at this year's budget, and we've been talking about, you know, some of the concerns that we've had over the course of the year, we had a loss of the excess surplus, which was greater than 275,000, reduction in the budgeted fund balance of 280, and the loss of mortgage revenue, which is another 50,000. So the total decrease in revenues is over $600,000. When we're looking at increases, we're looking at the fixed costs that continue to rise. Health, health benefits cost is projected to be 250,000. Charter school tuition continues to rise, special education costs between tuition and services, service contract costs, and transportation costs.
Those are all increases from the, from the original line items.
Those are increases from last year.
Yep.
And, and those are the major ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So when we're looking at, between a decrease of revenue and the increase in revenue, we're looking at a, a gap of 1.7. So in looking at balancing the budget, submitting that, from our budget and trying to make sure that all the needs of students are met throughout the district, we're looking at, this would be the break-even point, which is an 8.33 tax increase, which equates to a $489 increase over the course of this year on a, an assessed value home of 150,000.
Say, say that one more time, please. No, because he's right, I just, he's completely right.
When we're looking at the fixed cost increases, and we're looking at the, meeting the needs of all those numbers, based on these increases, and to fill that revenue gap, you're looking at an 8.33 tax increase.
Yep. To continue our projects at the same level that we are right now...
Well, there's, there's been a single increase, which is technology, which we, which we raised to a half percent, which is a $150,000 increase out of that.
Right. But besides that, keeping everything level on our fixed cost even, 8.33 gets us to zero.
You're looking at 7.33 would be a $216,000 budget shortfall, and would be a $430 increase on a $150,000 home. In order to meet that reduction, we would have to be looking at a staffing reduction overall within the district.
I'm sorry, is that the only option?
Well, again, you know, we'll be looking at, we have roughly five weeks before you have to finalize the budget, but again, we're looking at what the recommended budget is and what it is that we're going to have to do. We've identified areas that you would be looking at that would be most likely to meet that need, and still to make sure that the efficiency and the effectiveness of the district is retained. At 5% tax increase, there would be a budget shortfall of $722,342, and that would be an increase of $290 for the year on a $150,000 assessed home. In order to accomplish this, you'd be looking at further staffing reductions, increased class size, and we would be looking at slashing the technology budget back to the 35,000, which is where it currently has stood for the last few years. If you were looking at the 2% tax increase, which is where it's been held for the last two years, you'd be looking at a change of $110 increase on a $150,000 assessed home, and this would create a $1.3 million shortfall. You'd be looking at double-digit staffing reductions, increased class size, again, a slashing of the school budgets, and elimination of the technology line item. So again, here's looking at the historical perspective. You can see for the last two years that the budget was held at 2%. And if you look at all the years before that, that's the lowest percentage in the last 10 years. And that the varied rates have been anywhere from 2.5% all the way up to 6.5% over the last 10 years. Again, right now for this proposed budget, which is the preliminary budget that we need to submit, the recommendation to be flat is the 8.33 to meet that need. When we're looking at what the impact is and how, again, this is going above the 2%, this demonstrates the tax waivers that you have to the 2%. So there are waivers to the 2% that allow for increases beyond that 2%, and this starts with the bank cap for health benefits cost. So available in 2012, there was a 0.86% tax increase that could have been taken, that waiver could have been taken, and that would have allowed for an increase of taxes at that point of 0.86, and it would have generated an additional $160,500, and that would have remained in place for the next four years. That would have, a total cumulative tax into the budget would have been an additional The banked cap for the budget being under the cap from the 2013, you can see that would have generated an additional $85,000 each year. You can see that that tax increase would have been 0.39% at that time, and it would have generated an additional $256,527. So roughly a little bit over a percentage two to three years ago would have generated an additional $1 million for the district. There are also tax waivers based on the years 14 and 15. This is the banked cap for health benefits cost. That would have been a 0.46 increase and would have generated additional $100,000 for years 14 and 15. You also have banked cap for the increased enrollments. And so, again, this is an opportunity for districts that have growth to be able to increase their tax rate above that 2% to meet the increased needs within the district. That banked cap enrollment generates an additional $785,000, and again, would have been cumulative both this year and next year. And again, would be a 3% increase, but generates an additional 1.5. For this year, we have additional waivers as well, and again, it's based on healthcare costs and increased enrollment. Again, you can see that it's 102,000, which is a 0.47 in tax increase for the health benefits, and an allowable 2.28% generating almost a half million dollars based on the increased enrollment.
Is there a threshold on the enrollments? Like, do you have to have a certain percentage increase in enrollments in order to meet the criteria, or just out of curiosity?
No, I think it's a per pupil amount. So when you have increase of 10 kids, the amount goes up. They expect that you'll increase your budget, you know, by a per pupil amount.
Gotcha.
And if you haven't increased your budget, they give you a waiver to allow you to increase.
Okay.
And so we've averaged approximately 60 students each of the last few years.
Yeah, I know it's been significant.
So when you're looking at all the numbers as far as the overall amounts, and you're talking about the total amounts of the waivers above the 2%, this is looking at, in order to fill that amount, you're looking at, it's a 1.3 at a 6.33% tax increase, and when you're adding the base tax increase of 2%, that's what would bring us to the 8.33. Again, the only line item that we've really increased within the budget is technology. Everything else has been flat or has been, you know, is fixed cost raises within that budget.
And that's only a little over 100 grand, right? 120 grand increase? 115 grand increase? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Has state aid increased?
State aid, 31.
Oh, yeah, $34,000.
0.9% of our previous state aid.
And half of that is for park, according to the state. Half of that, 36,000 is for park.
I know you don't have a slide in this particular presentation, and I don't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but, because I certainly don't remember it, but does anybody recall what our history has looked like for state aid the last few years?
Oh, my goodness, I just happen to have that in front of me. The total, and this isn't including this year, what we're underfunded by the state, but as of last year, the total was $4,903,123. $609,000 in 2010-11, I believe. $1,594,000 the next year, $420,000 the next year, $913,000 the next year, $1,364,000 last year, for a total of almost $5 million. So, I mean, I think one thing that was interesting that Tim showed up there was the, you know, the two years at 2%, which was after, you know, our governor put that restriction on districts. And I think, I mean, it would be interesting to look statewide to see how many districts also did that, held at that 2% cap, just kind of out of like, oh, my gosh, we can't do anything else because the governors told us to do this. And now, interestingly enough, when, you know, I first heard about this banked cap idea, I kind of looked around to see what other districts are doing, and sure enough, I've seen multiple other districts around the state that are also now starting to say, hey, we just can't live like this. We just can't live with constant state cuts, a 2% cap, and increased costs. Like, at some point, you got to cry uncle. So we are not, we are certainly not alone in going to the taxpayers for more than the 2% cap. And I would bet you would see, you know, a similar trend if you looked at a lot of other districts.
I have some questions. As we pare this down or keep it as is over the next, you know, when's the deadline? May, April 20?
We have to take action at the April 20.
We have to take action at the April 20. And so the next few board meetings are going to be discussion about what our priorities are. Is this 8.33% where we want to be? And, you know, what's getting funded out of this year's budget? I have a question for Linda. You know, from the budget worksheet that I saw, you're budgeting healthcare costs at about a 10% increase. I have concerns about that number. And we have a healthcare ask right now on the board, but from my understanding, our increases over the last few years have not even been coming close to 10, well, they've been close, but they've been over.
They were under 10% this year.
They were, and this was the first year they were under 10%.
Yes, but state health benefits, there have been comments by other experts that the actuarial firm that estimates the increases uses somewhat questionable methods. And sometimes people feel that they're intentionally holding the rates down, and eventually, that's going to have to give too.
Well, when that happens, we'll go out. We'll go out to bid.
There was a time, yeah, there was a time in the 90s when there were like 23%, 25% increases because of this method that they're using.
When that happened, we went out to bid with, you know, walls or whatever.
That's when we left state health benefits.
Right. We left that, and, you know, hopefully that doesn't happen, but somebody will bid on us for a year or two and then jack us up and we'll go back. But I just want to, you're comfortable at this 10% number for now?
It's for a six-month period.
Okay.
And I'm cautiously optimistic that at least we'd be able to, you know, hold the reins enough to make it through those six months.
So the other thing that I wanted to just talk about the board, Linda and I sat and talked about these numbers. We ran through the numbers, and we realized about 93% of our budget is totally fixed cost. That means that there's less than $1 million of money that we have, quote-unquote discretionary funds. Most of that money is in the building-level budgets that, you know, Tim has highlighted has been cut over the years because we wanted to do that without affecting staff. 52% of our budget is staff. 14% of our budget is healthcare costs. You know, as we have these discussions, that's where we can find cost savings if we need to. I don't see any other place besides eliminating other positions where we can really find cost savings. But that being said, when we have these discussions at the next meeting, I think it is important that we have discussions about if we're spending, if we are funding positions that are necessary and that are in line with our priorities as a district. And I think that that has to be part of the conversation. As much as the conversation is about, is this 8.33 appropriate? We need to also hear about administrative cuts, about other teacher cuts, and about, you know, where we want to really fund, what we want to put our priorities as.
Just an observation on the healthcare costs. In the broader community, 10% would be a blessing. It's typically 12% to 18% is what people are.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. So.
You know, we are, our teachers, you know, the governor has asked the teachers to pay more into their salary, and we're at stage two, I believe, in that.
Yes.
And that will bring down some of our healthcare costs, but, you know, who knows? And, you know, we normally would have excess money to roll over to this budget from, you know, from, you know, maintenance this year, this winter was atrocious, and I'm sure we're into overtime for that, and we normally count on some of those savings. You know, we're talking about $160,000 increase in our maintenance budget, our contract for next year. We're going to have to have discussions about that as well. There's a lot of discussions we can have. You know, as I've talked to other board members and other community members, I believe we can do whatever we want in this budget, but it's all about priorities. It's about setting what we want to do as a board and what we want to do as a community and what we want to fund. We can make any choices. We can hire one teacher for 1,600 kids and, you know, spend the rest of the money somewhere else, but we need to really make the choices that we think is the best priorities, and this is the one time as a board that we get a really chance to really fund what our visions are for this district.
Well said. Thoughts?
I just have a question on the 2% cap. So now with these waivers, this is something that we could have done the past couple of years. It was, I thought that we were led to believe that we had to stick to that 2% cap when we switched the vote to November, and I thought we were bound by that. So we're not, so we're in a pivot.
I mean, the short answer is no. That's not true. And you can look, again, that's what's detailed on these slides. You could have raised taxes 0.86% and gone with a 2.86% tax increase in 2012, and at that point, you would have had another $750,000 that would have been put into the budget over the course of that time. For the banked cap for FY13, again, it's another 0.39%, another $100,000. And the cumulative effect of that, and the reasons these waivers are in place is that they know that, you know, this impacts the school system, whether it's the increased enrollment, but all of these things have a cumulative effect. So when you're talking about, again, you know, and even if you look at it now, the cumulative effect is significantly more than what we're talking, but if you take the 2%, 2%, and 8%, that averages out to a little bit over 4% over the last three years, which would significantly change the financial situation. It would significantly change what those building budgets could have looked like and changed what our resources within classrooms would have looked like.
And, absolutely. And would it be correct to say that if we don't take advantage of it this year, then we lose three years of, did you say that?
One year.
One year. So it's a rolling three-year average.
So the 2012 expires this year if it's not taken advantage of. And you want to explain the calculation?
Yeah, but also, the state budget program requires that in order to take advantage of that waiver, we also have to take advantage of the current year waiver.
Have a 13.
No.
You can do 12 and 14.
Current, then oldest, then keep going forward.
So you're looking at, okay, year 15, this is your waiver.
That's the state of New Jersey for you right there.
So you're looking at these two waivers that you would have to take advantage of first, and then go back to the FY12.
Just as a practical question, do you have to use the waivers in full? I mean, I know this is silly, but I mean.
No.
So you could use part, I mean, we're talking about going from 2% to 8.33. That's a pretty wide margin, but we have the flexibility to be able to go.
We're not using all the waivers.
We're not using the full waiver. The full waiver is 10.
But we have the flexibility to go from 2% on sort of a sliding scale all the way up to that 8.33, whatever we end up at, or even a little bit higher if we used all of our waivers.
All of the waivers is 10.08.
03, I believe.
10.08.
08.
But I think the important thing is to note at the, you know, at each of the different, you know, percent increases, what the actual difference is between what our operating budget is proposed to be and what it would end up being. So at 5%, we're talking about a $750,000 shortfall, or thereabouts, from our operating budget.
There's no more courtesy bussing to cut. You know, you and I have been on the board when we cut $1.3 million of the budget years, but there was fat on the bones. There is literally no more fat left to cut. We're at pure bone. We're at pure staff, you know, we're at pure, like, you want to cut football? Sorry, Jerry, not to, not to bring us, not to bring us to a sorry subject.
No need to get personal, Adam.
But those are seriously, those are seriously the decisions that we're going to be talking about in the next, you know, month. Not, don't worry, I'm not talking about football. But, you know, what extracurricular activities do we want to cut, if we want to cut any? What teachers do we want to cut if we want to cut any? What administrators do we want to cut if we want to cut any? Those are the conversations that we're going to be having.
And I did want to just go back to Jerry's point for a minute because I don't want it to, like, come across that, like, you know, we were somehow deceived about the 2% cap. I think most districts for the last couple of years have held to that 2% cap. I mean, this is the first year that I've heard. I mean, there may have been a district here or there that used some of these waivers over the last couple of years. I kind of pay attention to the stuff at the state level. I haven't really heard about it. This is the first year that I'm hearing multiple districts using these bank caps. I think a lot of districts, I mean, to move your, you know, because it kind of goes along with the whole package, remember? We moved our elections to November, which means you don't have to vote anymore on the budget. You stick to the 2% cap to say, well, we just moved our budget to, you know, our elections to November, and now we're going to raise it 5%, and you don't get to vote on it. It's kind of like, you know, like, I think this is kind of like an easing-in kind of process, that districts have done, and you move it first.
But it wasn't even a swap.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think a lot of these.
Right.
We also had one time.
Which is very disappointing to me.
Linda, would you like to, can you talk about the one-time monies that we had? The ARA money, the stimulus money? You know, over the last two years, we had extra revenue that was one-time funds.
Right. We got.
We knew, to long story short, we knew we were going to be in this position, or at least a position similar to this.
Well, you're saying there was other monies that we were using to kind of fill those gaps, and we didn't.
We got some one-time federal funding that had not been anticipated, so that helped to support the budget. We got an unexpected state aid outside of the budget cycle, and so that was almost like found money. So we were able to roll that forward, and we kept, these savings, we just kept rolling forward until they were all worn out. And one of the big savings was when we went back into state health benefits three years ago. We had been looking at a 28% increase in our health benefits if we had stayed with the private plan, and we saved quite a bit of money going into state health benefits. So that, again, helped us, we kept pushing that savings forward until it is now run out.
And I mean, I've heard a lot of board members across the state talk about, I mean, their budgets have been kind of been like Band-Aid method for the last few years. You know, as state money coming in is decreased, you're kind of looking at where your money is coming from or not coming from, and, you know, you're kind of like patching the holes everywhere that you can. And I mean, that was certainly part of my takeaway from Mr. Colontano's presentation a couple of months ago, was you guys have kind of been running okay up until now, but next year, you got problems.
Yep. The other thing I just want to say is that there's no maintenance projects in this budget. We're not funding any, you know, we normally do. And that's one of the first things that we could cut to reduce the tax increase, but there are, we're not funding any maintenance out of the general fund, all of our maintenance for this year, or all of our projects, capital projects for this year. Just the one, which we budgeted over the last three years for, is coming out of our capital reserve, which can't be used for the general fund even if we wanted to.
So when you talk about the theoretical 8 and 1/3% increase, which is this overall shortfall plus increases in some of our non-discretionary costs, it also includes what you're putting in for a budget of roughly $150,000 for technology. Is that correct? Does it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Does it include, I mean, are there other, aside from, yeah, I put a line item in for an increase to health benefits, we saw that, we put in our anticipated budget for the current staff. Do you have any other increases that are budgeted? Like, you talked about the building-level stuff, where Irving went from 70,000 down to 150,000. about the building level stuff, where Irving went from seventy thousand down to forty-something thousand, I think the number was? Are, are there any increases at the building level in this budget that you've, this preliminary, you know, pie in, I don't even want to call it pie in the sky, but the status quo budget, are there increases to those budgets, or are those flatlined as well?
So we, we knew we had a six-hundred thousand dollar decrease.
Uh huh.
Based on those numbers, and so, you know, early this year, we took action to free up monies that would eliminate, you know, at least, or at least meet that need, and what that did is that freed up one-time monies within this, this current year. So when we were looking at the, the money that we have for one-time purchases for this year, that's where, again, you're looking at the materials, you're looking at the technology, you're trying to outfit, based on knowing that you have that money available this year to get us up to, to meet the standards of Common Core, to upgrade our, our curriculum materials, to upgrade our resources. Now, again, as you move forward, we, you know, we're, we're in a good position, but you're going to have to look the same way that we've talked about the technology, in that you have to have a reci, a, a, a cycle, you know, a replacement cycle put into place. Okay? We, we need to have that conversation down the line as far as with curriculum materials. We've kind of, you know, met the need this year, but again, that's something that has to be addressed moving forward. I, I think one of the things that's kind of telling in the budget that we've, we've had some conversation about is that, you know, you want to have stability within the budget, you shouldn't have fluctuations. We shouldn't be, you know, two hundred thousand dollars one year and six hundred thousand dollars the next year where there's large fluctuations. You don't want money going into excess surplus. You, you shouldn't have practices that, 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 that lead to that. We, we want to make sure that we have a good control of our finances. And so by doing that, that's, that's where we're trying to make sure that there's a stable budget building and that these things are forecast as we move forward.
I don't mean to be dense, but just, so the simple answer is that the building level budgets were not, in the current budget, that wasn't something that you increased?
No, that's, they have been increased.
It's because we're looking at the one-time purchase out of this year.
No, no, I, I'm not, I'm not weighing, I'm not waxing poetic on it, I'm just, the, part of your eight-point-three-three percent is simply that if it was forty thousand this year, there were some one-time things we were able to do this year, but it's gonna be forty thousand dollars next year as well. That's all I'm asking.
Correct. There were not, there were not major increases in the budget this year based on making the purchases, the one-time purchase this year. As you look at moving forward, that has to be a conversation with the principals as far as what is the need and how we're going to address that. You know, one of the things we talked about at the beginning of the year was that, you know, the Bartle teachers get zero dollars to outfit their classrooms. You know, those are the kind of things that, again, you know, we, we need to talk about what are their needs and how we're funding those buildings to make sure that teachers have choice, and that they have the ability to set up their classrooms in an effective manner.
And having two daughters in Bartle, I want to thank them for how well they are set up despite that lack of funds.
Indeed.
So am I, am I allowed to talk about this? Is it, are we, is this, is this still open or no?
Yeah.
So the, the building, the preliminary budget has a twenty-two percent increase for middle school, a five percent increase for high school, a nineteen percent reduction for Bartle, and a one-point-three percent increase for Irving.
The current, the, okay, so it's not totally.
The budget you're approving tonight.
Well, we aren't approving anything, the budget we looked at tonight.
You are approving something.
Oh, we're approving the preliminary budget?
Yeah.
That's, but that's just for review?
That's for review, that all changed.
Okay, alright.
You know, I, those numbers are, I think those numbers are accurate based on the statement that you just said, that we, we've already spent a certain amount of money.
Yes, and when you're looking at Bartle was our major focus as far as the reading program, as far as, again, you know, the technology, you know, all of those components, that was the plan, you know, to make the one-time purchases this year so that they're in place going into next year.
Is there any other discussion about?
I, I have a question, and I don't know if we want to have, if the central, the central office line item, that, the other one was a large increase, can you tell me what makes up the central office line item?
Yes, that is the increased bandwidth going from a hundred meg to three hundred meg.
Yep. And is that just, and is that also supplies for your office, and, that's not, I know that's not staffing.
Well, the addition is the increased broadband, there was an increase in insurance was the other component.
Perfect. Can we make sure that we get the budget presentation up on the website, you know, this week?
Yes.
Anybody else have discussion items about the preliminary budget review?
Ashley, you know, your first board meeting, don't you, you know?
I'm about to walk out.
More questions than, than answers.
Cherise.
So, we're gonna move on now to the Board Committee reports and recommendations, and this is the first time that we're actually gonna be doing things differently than, I believe, has ever really been done on the board before. We changed our bylaw last meeting, and the way that this will work is that the committee chairs will give their reports, and we'll have a discussion after each of the reports. Following the last discussion, which is the policy discussion, we will then have public comment, and community members can then come up to the podium and give public comment about the items that will be approved on there. We'll try to reference those items in the committee report, but certainly feel free to take a look at, at those items and see if there are any comments or questions that you have on them. Following the public comment piece of this, then we'll come back and we'll actually move those items, and we'll have another chance for discussion as well, but we'll move those items afterwards, and that's the board action piece of it, which is number fourteen. Okay? So we're gonna start with Claire and the Curriculum and Instruction Committee report.
Okay, we, Curriculum Committee did meet tonight, that was me and Dan and Michelle. We discussed a few items, the first one being the Tier One materials for Reading Language Arts. As we've reported in the past, K and one teachers have chosen the program called Imagine It. Grades two and three teachers have chosen Reading Street. Grades four through eight and nine through twelve will have chosen novels that they would like to read and have selected themes for each unit. We talked quite a bit about the Technology Committee and got reports on the two meetings that happened. There was about twenty people at the first meeting, about maybe ten at the second meeting, and all the meetings had a mixture of parents, teachers, administrators, and a board member, at least one. And we also talked about the integration of social studies and technology. Social studies and technology will be integrated into the language arts curriculum, so it will be a curriculum that will meet the standards of language arts and of social studies. Social studies is not going away, which I would never let happen. The focus of these curriculum will be project-based learning, so there'll be units around project-based learning, which will involve technology and social studies topics in addition to language arts skills. Professional development, there will be tonight an item about approving staff development workshops that will provide writers, K through five, writer's workshop and guided reading training in grades, oh, I'm sorry, K through eight. Consultants were chosen based on their direct training with Lucy Calkins and past experience with the consulting group. Google Apps, PBLs, and Fontas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment Training will also be provided by Highland Park teachers. And finally, curriculum writing, for, you'll see on the agenda tonight are names being submitted to write the language arts, which will include social studies and technology. K through five, six through eight, social studies will also start, and there will be a posting up soon for nine to twelve language arts, math revisions, and nine to twelve social studies. In June, there'll be two days devoted to looking at the Common Core and two days of professional development for the teachers, where, and also using assessment to drive instruction. And each building has been asked to do its own building-level professional development plan. And with, do I say I'm gonna move it, or no?
Nope.
And let me just see if there's anything you want to look at on the agenda. I think it's all self-expla, I think it's all self-explanatory. There's several teen center events that Ms. Asamoah referenced tonight. Okay, and that would be it.
Okay. Is there any discussion about the curriculum items? Any questions?
I might have misheard something, Claire. Did you say something about curriculum for nine through twelve? Because I'm looking at the list and I only see, like, language arts, K through eight, and then social studies, six through eight, but then I thought I heard you say something about nine through twelve, but I don't see that.
Yes, I said it's gonna be posted.
Oh, oh, the jobs are, okay, okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear you correctly, thank you.
Questions, other thoughts?
I have Chromebook stuff, it's under Finance Agenda, so I'm gonna bring it up there. Unless, I don't, it, what do you, you know?
Is it in the Curriculum Committee?
No, it's in the Finance Committee, it's the motion.
Okay. So Catherine?
The Finance Committee did meet tonight. In addition to going over some of the agenda items, we got a rod grant update, the bid opening is scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-second, and we hope to award the contract on or before May fifth. And we also had an opportunity to review policies, which we'll be bringing forward probably at the next meeting. I also want to bring your attention to items number nineteen and twenty. We are very grateful for the donation of weight room equipment. It was valued at five thousand dollars from Robert Madison and Vincent Fry. And we also want to thank Richard Palo Castro for donation of three thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars toward the purchase of football equipment. We need all the help we can get, and we really appreciate it. That's all.
I knew I was gonna get in trouble with that one.
I have a goofy question about the, the sidewalk repairs. Does the district get the same benefit that individuals get, where you don't have to pay it all at once, you pay it off over?
Oh, I doubt it. We get the benefit of being part of a bid.
And that's it?
So, yeah.
I suspect that we'll be getting a bill from the borough once it's all completed, and we'll be expected to pay it, yeah.
We went out to bid ourselves, and this was the cheaper.
This is better than the price that.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if we got the same advantages.
Schools don't pay property taxes, so they can't actually tack it onto a property tax bill.
I got a question on the budget items, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Just to make sure I understand what is, is ultimately gonna get moved, which hasn't been moved yet.
Twenty-four and twenty-five.
And twenty-six, I think. Oh, no, you're right, I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four through twenty-seven all relate to the budget.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. At any rate, I, this is a tentative budget that we're approving tonight, this is not the budget that we're approving, I just want to be clear that that's the understanding what we're, what is gonna be moved and what we're theoretically approving. And also, this item twenty-five that talks about the bank cap funds and then, yeah, the capped funds to go above the two percent levy, all we're saying is that we're leaving the door open for us to use these funds, we're not committing to raising taxes by that amount. We're saying we're leaving that door open, right?
Correct.
Okay, just to make sure we're all clear that.
Yeah, it's just.
We're not actually acting on this budget right now.
We're sending it to the county superintendent.
At, at the next two meetings, that, that's where, that'll be continued conversation before it sets to be certified on April twenty-eighth.
Just making sure we're clear, that's all.
And I want to.
I'm sorry, I'm just wondering, does the county superintendent then just kind of go, okay, or like, is there some, is there a back and forth with the county superintendent, or like, what's?
Only if there's errors.
Ah, okay.
But he also, he has the opportunity to redline our budget, they still have that, correct? If, if, if he wanted to, he can redline any part of.
At this, at this juncture, or?
At any juncture, really.
They're, they're looking for errors.
Yeah, they're.
They're looking to see if you're in violation.
Okay, I mean, just, I didn't know what the procedure was there.
They have an opportunity to do that, they don't do it.
I want to just draw your.
The budget newbie.
Draw your attention to number thirty-one on the Finance Report, which is the approval of the Comegno Law Group, and this is for legal services from March twenty-fifth to June thirtieth. So this is a, we, we are, the, the attorneys that we've been using, and the attorneys that we've, that we have contracted with are representing, yes, they're representing other clients in a matter that we're also involved with, so we have a, we have to pick up an attorney just to represent ourselves in one matter where those other attorneys have been conflicted out. So before that question is asked, that's the reason that we, that we have that approval. And if you'll notice, it's not an open-ended approval, it's just till June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
But aren't all contracts, like, I mean, wasn't the contract for Schwartz-Symon like that too? I mean, and then you, then each year you vote as to whether you renew that contract?
Yeah, it's quite short.
Right, right, well.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not interested in moving forward with this, I'm not gonna support them tonight. I, I just think it's important that we asked, we asked our attorney that we have presently what their recommendation for an attorney was, and I just want, I want the board to know that I'm not gonna be supporting this motion tonight. I do want to talk about motions, items eleven through seventeen, it's the Chromebooks. I, again, I'm going to ask, it's hard to, it's hard to say exactly what, what I, I, my recommendation is tonight without hearing from Kim and other, and other people, but as it stands right now, I think this is way too large of a scope for us to move forward right now. I think we need to pare down this number, I think we need to pilot, pilot programs, and I think we need to write down exactly what our goals and objectives are. We have until June thirtieth to spend all of this money, and if the administration comes to me, you know, or comes to the board at some point and says, okay, we've tried, we've bought four carts, we've done this X, Y, and Z with them, this is what we want to see for next year, we do, we should do that, we should buy two hundred now, a hundred now, we should buy a small amount now and try them out, and do a lot of the stuff that you spoke about, about, you know, about seeing how, what the glitches are gonna be and testing it out. We don't need to test it out on such a wide scale. If we don't, if, if we realize that we're not ready for this many Chromebooks, you know, in a month, I don't want to have these sitting there without, you know, without being used on a regular basis. I want, I want, I would much rather buy Projectives, or buy Moodle, or buy, you know, a number of other, a number of other, you know, funding. I just think no matter what it is, it has to be planned out, and I don't think, I'm, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this large purchase yet.
I guess I feel that tonight, Mr. Lassiter gave us a lot of examples of how teachers have already used these, and I believe that they will use them.
But teachers can use, teachers can also use other technology.
But a lot of those technologies, you actually need laptops to use, like an Elmo, like a Smartboard, you need laptops to run those, and I think, I don't, I don't, I don't have, I don't share your worry, is what I'm saying.
That's fine, but we're not at the stage where, or at least from my understanding, we're not at a stage where a teacher is going to have a laptop in their classroom every single day, a laptop cart in their classroom every single day.
No, I think that would probably be wonderful.
Yeah, I, I would like, I would love to be there, but we're not at that stage yet. So buying four hundred now.
Puts us well on our way.
But we could buy four hu, we could buy, we can buy a hundred now, test it out, pilot it, see where we are for the, from May and June, and if you come to us on the June seventeen meeting and say, we, we think that these programs, we think that this program has worked excellently, buy the remainder for next year, that's the same thing as buying, buying four hundred now and, you know, just testing it on a smaller scale.
Right.
I want to also, I want to also test projectors, you know, I'm in a college classroom that has a, you know, my professor sends me my, our lecture slides, you know, the day before class, so I can bring them, I can bring them to, to the classroom. That's the environment that these students are, at least in the high school level, are[1707.73] going into. You know, I also saw in Mark, in Mark's school, you know, teacher-directed learning, you know, where research was done in a group at the front of the classroom with smartboards and projectors. Then students went off on their own into their private, you know, student-directed learning, and then they went in small groups. I think we need to try more things out before we make a wholehearted commitment to one thing.
Is there any other discussion about the Finance Items?
I do want to just go back about the lawyer thing for a minute because the wording for the last law firm we hired was exactly the same, except it was February 11th, 2014 to June 30th, 2014. So it, it's kind of semantics. This does leave us open to the exact same contract, and we would then have to decide next year whether or not we renew that contract, so.
Yes.
But, but we assign the work. It's not, we don't have anybody on retainer, we're, we're paying, you know, to, to keep them on.
Is there any other discussion of the Finance Items? Ann, could we have the Personnel Report, please?
Yes, Personnel Committee has actually met twice since our last meeting. We met last week to discuss policies, which I believe will be on the agenda in our next reading, next meeting for first reading, is that right, Tim?
Yes.
And mostly, unfortunately, just mandatory policies that we had no real say in. Mostly, we were discussing mandatory policies that had been handed to us from the state, pretty much had to accept them out of whole, whole. And tonight, we met to discuss the agenda items. I particularly want to call everybody's attention and welcome our new Irving School Principal who we're hiring tonight on the agenda, so that's, that's a great, that's great news. And that's, that was, that's the Personnel Report.
Is there any discussion, questions for Ann or the Personnel Committee?
I'd like to point out Number Four, Item Number Four, about a retirement of a paraprofessional at the high school, Alice Prignolato, and thank her for her service.
Anything else? No? Adam, Policy Report, please?
Yes, the Policy Committee met briefly to discuss a potential change in the bylaws presented by Darcy. I don't know, Darcy, do you want to explain? Well, let me just say, the, the Policy Committee did not decide to move forward with the recommendations. You know, Darcy spoke about opening up our meetings to the public and codifying it in our bylaws. I mean, the Policy Committee believed that our policy right now allows committees to be open to the public, and we were not comfortable with making any changes. Besides that, the Policy Committee is going to, hopefully, you know, we've been trying to find a date to meet, we will define a date to meet, and I also want to encourage other, the other committees to go through their red folder and finalize any changes that they need to make to the overall policies that should be coming up on the agenda. You know, it sounds like Personnel has and Curriculum is in the process. So, thank you.
Because we're King's Policy.
Yeah, well, you know, Finance has a good amount tonight, and we're going to have a good amount next week, but, you know.
Any questions or comments about the policies that are on the agenda here? Okay. The Highland Park Court of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. As we have done in the past, all the comment will be limited to three minutes, or I am, I'd like to make a motion that it be limited to three minutes. Lynda, could we just have a roll call or a?
I need a second.
Yes.
Second.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
No.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
And as you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and also please sign in.
There's no signage.
Oh.
Somebody took it? There were three.
Mike Lassiter took it.
Mr. Lassiter. One of those candidates, chase him down. Those pesky candidates.
The pen is still here.
You know, we run, we run a good ship here.
My name is Brian McFadden, Dina Cola, I live at 118 South Second Avenue here in Highland Park. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Ashley Warren for pointing, getting pointers to the board tonight. Good job. Look forward, we look forward to working with you, Ashley. I hope that you stick to what you said about pushing back on some of the things that a lot of people in the community seem to be against, particularly the, the high stakes, high-stakes testing. In terms of this, I had a couple of questions about the initial budget preparation that was, that was done tonight. I wanted to know if the board was aware that the Town Council is also considering a, going over the budget by approximately $350,000, if that was a consideration of the board in preparing this?
Yeah, about a 7%, they're talking about a 7% increase.
As well?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to have everybody on record that we know that we're looking at, at a proposed 7%, 7.5%, somewhere thereabouts, budget tax increase. I wanted to also ask the board if you had considered at all putting this up for a vote in November, because even though it was, even though you don't have to put it up for a vote, according to the statute, you're still permitted.
Sorry, I was breathing.
Okay, wow, it looked like, it looked like there was a.
My apologies. I think it's also important to understand if we, if we do put it up for a vote and it gets voted down, there is no, we are, we are bound by law that we can't fund any of the programs put up for vote in that, in that budget.
So, so then, that just leads to the question, do you think that going to the town with a 7.5% tax levy growth would potentially not garnish the support of the town in general?
The town has supported. I've never, I've never lost a budget vote since we've been on the board.
Okay, so then there would be no concern that you would lose that budget vote?
If you ask the town.
And in light of coming to the community and saying that you need, or you at least want to very seriously consider looking at a 7.5% tax increase on us, does anybody up there think that potentially we can't afford to go to Disney, I think as well, Mr. Lassiter called West Windsor, with, in terms of their technology? And Mr. Capone indicated we needed to start somewhere, we're already somewhere within technology. And how does that impact your thoughts on tonight saying, voting on buying 400 Chromebooks without, without a real plan as to what to do with them? And I, and I want to thank particularly Mr. Sherman for raising that, let's put on the brakes a little bit on this technology. There's not, and it, I'm somewhat of an odd person to be speaking about the technology because I'm up here with my iPad, I love technology.
I do too.
And, and I think that, that it has some good use in schools, but it's about priorities and about spending and about our budgets, and can we afford them? And is the cost of affording them a very large tax increase when we're operating in a world where there's a cap of 2% on property taxes? And we seem to be, we seem to find a way around that 2% cap when we want to. We seem to be very creative in avoiding that cap in areas when we need to, to spend money, but we don't seem to be that creative, shall I say, in avoiding other mandates that you guys sit up at the table and say, "Well, those are just mandated by the state, there's nothing we can do about that." Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I wanted to make a quick remark about the Chromebook purchase. I wonder if the board would consider at least waiting a couple of weeks on that purchase, given that the field testing is going on, I think, starting next week with the park tests? I realize that these Chromebooks are wanted not for park testing, but for educational applications, but obviously it would be great if they would work for both. So I wonder if the board would consider waiting until after field testing has been completed and we get impressions from those districts about how the Chromebooks worked? That's a suggestion that I would make. Secondly, I've been asked to read a letter, this is authored by Anna Peiret, a parent in our community, and Derek Schilling. It concerns the World Language Program at Irving and Bartle, and I've, I've passed out copies of the letter. Anna told me that she will email you the final letter with all these signatories in the near future. It's a long letter, I'll, I'll skip through a little bit.
Ann, I'm just, I'm going to just, I'm going to, at three minutes, I'll just let you know that it's three minutes.
Okay.
Because there is a, a public comment, you know, sort of cap, so.
Sure, yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Let me, let me try to skip through a little bit. I mean, the gist of the letter, I'm, pretty, it's fairly evident. "As residents, parents, and a world, and as world language educators, Ms. Peiret and Mr. Schilling are both professors of French, of French at Rutgers and Johns Hopkins Universities. We are extremely concerned that Bartle Elementary School has not been able to offer any world languages instruction since September, when its sole position in Spanish was vacated. Under no circumstances should a community that greets its visitors in many languages deny its children access to second language education. We hope that the Board of Education will see that every effort is made to fill the position as soon as possible, so that students can receive minimal world languages instruction in what remains of the 2013 to 2014 school year. We understand that the situation at Bartle is temporary and that some reasonable attempts have been made to staff a part-time position in Spanish, and that the Board of Education is not itself responsible for staffing positions. Nevertheless, we believe that the circumstances that led to what is now a six-month instructional gap for pupils in grades two through five needs to be addressed immediately. The potentially destructive consequences of an extended lack of second language instruction for 450 affected students should be clear. Unless instruction is restored, whether in Spanish or in another world language, the learning gap will compromise learning goals at benchmark grades in two, at benchmarks in grades two and four, as outlined in the New Jersey State Board of Education Regulations", and she cites to the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards for World Languages from 2004. "That's going to affect us not only in the current school year, but also well into the future. Our district can ill afford this shortcoming, particularly given that foreign language proficiency has become a defining feature and selling point of the public charter schools." I'll skip through a little bit. I'll, I would reiterate, we discussed before, at Irving School, world language instruction is mostly administered with recorded materials, and I want to give a shout out to my kids' teachers who've done a great job with them, even though they do not speak Spanish. My kids have learned a, a good amount of Spanish, amazingly, from videos. Students in elementary school generally only receive half an hour of Spanish instruction a week, and by third grade, many of them find learning a world language boring. The Highland Park School District should consider creating a full-time position for language instruction at Irving and Bartle Elementary, to ensure that the children of Highland Park have adequate access early in their schooling to world language education." I'll leave the letter for now. I've heard it suggested that perhaps a full-time position could be created so that someone, it could be shared between Irving and Bartle, so that Irving students could get some instruction by an actual Spanish speaker. I mean, my son enjoys listening to Los Tres Osos, you know, and the little video clips, but clearly more can be done, and I would just ask the board to please consider a full-time position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if I could just say, I mean, I think that the sentiment is certainly something that we all agree with. I think when we're looking at the budget, when we're looking at these kinds of things, you know, we have to weigh, weigh those realities, but I do think that it is something that we, we all prioritize. And so if there's a way for us to offer that, that kind of instruction, you know, certainly that we'll be able to, to try to do that.
I'm, I'm sure that the board shares my opinion about that.
Indeed.
I mean, I, clearly, I mean, I am also a lover of technology, but for me personally, and for many parents that I've spoken with, not all, certainly, you know, world language instruction is a higher priority than getting those Chromebooks in here right now, especially at the lower levels, you know, the lower grades, where we're not talking about a lot of Skyping with Mexican students, you know, which is fantastic, but, you know, it's not going to be happening at Irving right away.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Hi, Buffy Wild Greenberg, 123 Park Place. I want to first congratulate Ashley on being selected as the new Board of Education member. And I just had a few questions on scheduling, possible scheduling changes. At the last Board of Ed meeting, there were some discussions on scheduling, it was mentioned tonight in terms of Social Studies, and I just wanted a little more clarification on what are the specific changes being considered at each school and the timeframe for the changes, as well as if there are proposed changes for the 2014 to 2015 school year, and what are the reasons and considerations for the changes in schedule? And specifically, I was hoping for a little more elaboration on the Social Studies change that had been mentioned, I think by Claire earlier.
So maybe, maybe.
What is the question?
Exactly, what are the proposed changes to scheduling and sort of how the new Social Studies curriculum will look compared to the old one? You had mentioned that it's going to be more project-based, I'm not sure, just needed a little more clarification.
Right, so it'll be more project-based, but it will be integrated with the Language Arts, so that Language Arts and Social Studies will happen similarly, at the same time.
And are there any other proposed changes at the other schools in terms of scheduling?
Scheduling? I don't know.
Right now, there's a number of conversations looking at scheduling and the usage of time overall throughout the district. You know, I think to Ann's point, you know, when you're, you're talking about, you know, what it is that we're, we're putting students into, we, we've talked before about the fact that there's a requirement that we're not meeting as far as health and physical education. We talked about that, and so all of those things are taken into account as we're talking about how to best meet the needs of those students. We don't have anything to present at this point.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Buffy.
Hi, my name is Allison Salerno, and I live on Grant Avenue. I sort of, somewhat related to what Buffy was asking about, to the extent that the administration is considering scheduling changes at the middle school and the high school, I, as a parent, I'm concerned. I don't have an opinion about what kind of scheduling works best, it's not my area of expertise. I don't know if rotating schedules work best or whatever, that's not my point. My concern is at the pace of change, not at the change itself. I happen to work in a school district, I am a teacher, and we are looking at schedule changes, and in my district, it's taking years, months and years. We have a committee of faculty, we've been able to visit other schools of our size and see how the schedules work. I would just encourage the administration and the board to be prudent in terms of making these kind of curricular changes. I am a teacher of special, students with special needs, very, very skill fragile students, and I'm particularly concerned about if you were to think about doing it, say, for the fall. I know that, you know, right now, we're having all our IEP meetings, and parents have expectations as to what their child's schedule is going to look like in terms of helping children meet their learning needs. So particularly since the board has expressed concern, that I think we all have, with an achievement gap, I think it's really important that, and would encourage you to take your time in making these changes. This is not the kind of thing that should happen in a matter of weeks or months, but it really needs to be a collaborative process that takes into account all, all the stakeholders, the parents, the students, the teachers, and the administrators, since we want to modulate the school environment in ways that will contribute to student learning. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison.
The first topic is our association recommendations on Easter Monday. We'd like to recommend a delayed opening for staff. The last time we had to work on an Easter Monday, that's how it was scheduled. It proved very helpful to our staff who travel over the holiday weekend to have those extra few hours in the morning. We are also in favor of two additional days for professional development in the beginning of the year within the regular school calendar. And the rest of my statement will focus on the results of our technology survey. I'm going to try and, without going through every question, I'm going to try to break down how we looked through the data and how we validated the data, and I don't have my glasses, so bear with me. The survey was taken by, by our association as a needs assessment, so we may offer the community and the board, oh, I'm sorry, so we may offer commentary on the first step of the district's technology plan to purchase 400 Chromebooks. We received a fairly equal response from all of the four buildings, meaning that there was not an uneven amount of survey responses between buildings. That would have been concerning to us if we received only a few at Irving and then many at the high school, but there was an even amount. We had 76 responses from the 200 staff members who were polled, and while they, this may not seem like a large number, the survey responders were 80% instructional staff. This is important to note, since Chromebooks are targeted for use with students. Almost 70% of the staff polled have one or less working computers in their room, most of whom are instructional staff. When I dissected the data, I looked specifically at the instructional staff for that. So there are one or zero computers in. So there are one or zero computers in 70% of our staff that we pulled, that responded. When questioned about whether a technology for learning purposes was better, about the same, or worse, the majority of the respondents replied about the same, 51%, and the next largest group was worse, at 34%. It was about, well, after the breakdown of that data of instructional personnel, half of the teachers at Bartle and Irving said that it was worse. So, we identified that Bartle and Irving had the greatest need for technology that they had not had before.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what the question--
Sure.
Sorry, it's me. Could you repeat what the question was? I just, I didn't--
Sure. The question was, I'll repeat, I'll read the direct question that we asked.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Thinking only of your experiences in this district, is your current ability to effectively use up-to-date technology for learning purposes better, about the same, or worse than it has been in the past?
Okay, thank you.
We found that, we also asked an open-ended question. We asked this question two ways. How do you use technology in your classroom to assist your students with their day-to-day learning? We had one question where, that had responses for them, such as research-based, things like that, but the more telling was the open-ended question, where teachers were allowed to just answer in a box. And out of the respondents that were instructional staff at Irving, half of them didn't talk about Chromebooks at all. They talked about their smartboards. And they talked about how they use their smartboards in the classroom to accomplish their technology goals. So that was, like I said, I'm not for or against Chromebooks, I'm just presenting the data as it came to us.
Was that, did you have information about where that came from by school?
I did.
Was that primarily an Irving school?
That was primarily Irving. I did not hear about smartboards from, in any other commentary.
Okay.
Do they have them in any other buildings?
Yeah, there's some in Bartle.
Yeah? In classrooms, or are they in more communal areas?
I thought we bought a few--
They're in classrooms.
I thought the Ed Foundation bought a few--
There's one in the media center.
Yeah, there's definitely one in the media center.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, are there any in classrooms where teachers could use them? Because I know there are some in classrooms in Irving, but I don't know if there's some in classrooms in Bartle.
I don't know where we moved them over the years.
My Bartle people are saying no, that there's none in classrooms in Bartle.
Two, yes.
Two.
There's three special ed classrooms that have them.
Okay, to repeat that for the group, there are three special ed classrooms that have them in the media center. Okay. We took another, we had a question here that said, please assess your personal skill level in the following computer use areas from beginner, intermediate, and advanced. And most functions that you would use, our staff felt that they were in the middle, that they were intermediate. There were functions like email use, program writing, program presentation, web browsers. The ones that stood out were the use of the cloud, which is necessary for Chromebooks. Overwhelmingly, the staff said, on all schools, that they would need training for this. That use of the cloud was not something that they were familiar with, they were on a beginner level. Also, obtaining and using apps and using, also necessary for Chromebook use, the staff said they would need training on that. Those were the two specific areas that the line stated that they were, definitely did not feel confident in their use. And apparently, we have some very good keyboarders, because that was the only section that they said they felt that they were experts in. 80%, however, oh, wait, okay, have you ever personally used a Chromebook? 80% of the respondents stated that they have never used a Chromebook. How familiar are you with the way Chromebook functions? There were, it was the same for familiarity. It was 80% are not familiar with how they function. However, regardless of that data, when asked the question, if Chromebooks were made available, how long do you think that it would take for you to begin implementing them for classroom use? Right away, a short time, or not for a long, long time? Most people answered, the majority of respondents, 85%, stated that they felt they would be able to implement Chromebooks either right away or after a short time. So, that's telling us that they don't have the training, they don't have the knowledge, but they feel that they will get the knowledge if Chromebooks were presented. Which of the following do you believe would be an impediment towards your easy implementation of Chromebooks? And this was something we expected. They need professional development, that was 70%, and they need reliable and fast wireless internet connection, that was also essential, 80%. So, while there was not a great outcry from our members for or against Chromebooks, this survey did provide us with some valuable information. We had a solid majority of respondents who were confident that they could implement Chromebooks very quickly in a short amount of time. We also had a majority of respondents that stated the biggest hurdles that they faced for being able to use Chromebooks would be lack of professional development or reliable wireless network. I would like to add that the Association would be interested in seeing our members visit schools such as West Windsor and Hillsborough to see how other districts utilize Chromebook technology for their students. The data from Irving staff showed that they currently use their smartboards as their main source of instructional technology. The data from Bartle showed that they are desperately in need of technology. They don't have a preference, this wasn't from their comments specifically. Chromebooks or not, it's just the immediate need that they want addressed. Bartle was the school with, I think out of 18 instructional staff, it was like 10 or 11 said that it was worse, and the others said that it was about the same. The middle school had a majority of respondents that were concerned about the reliable network. The high school had a majority of general tech questions that were concerned about, particularly about the need for wireless printers in their building. It seemed that their product was very important, because their process can be done in a variety of ways, but the printers, to be wireless, have wireless printers, was essential in the high school. The Association would like to see a clear progression of a technology plan with set goals that have been developed, with member input and consensus for, we feel that it is vital for a plan to be developed only after gaining input from all avenues in order to make the most responsible and educationally appropriate choices for our schools and staff members. And that was, you know, I'm not sure that that's going to help you with your decision, but as I said, this was the data as we got it. And we specifically did not ask the question, do you want a Chromebook or not? Because we knew from having conversations with people that they weren't familiar with Chromebooks. Valuable information was that they felt they could implement technology. So, that's going to be, you know, up to more discussion or what you decide tonight. I'm hoping that this helps you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Kim.
Good evening, or almost good morning. Okay.
Denise, just state your name, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm tired, like you all are. Denise May Friar, 314 Wayne Street. So, with all this talk of letting people go or passing an 8% hike in my taxes, you have a lot of people in administration at this point. You have two assistant superintendents, you have a data person, but your own policy says that you should only have one district superintendent. Currently, you have two. If you go to Highland Park Board Policy Chart, Organizational Chart, that's 1110, Organizational Chart. You have the Board of Ed. Underneath the Board of Ed, you've got the superintendent. Underneath you, the superintendent, you have one position for assistant superintendent. The first we heard of any discussion of an additional assistant superintendent was on September 23rd at a closed session, executive session. On September 23rd, in the public agenda, nothing was posted. There are no minutes, interestingly enough, for that particular public session online, none that I could find on your site. On October 21st, there was an agenda addendum that says, quote, "I move the Board of Education accept the recommendation of superintendent, of the superintendent to appoint Michelle Callis as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for the district pending completion of the criminal blah, 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 for $130,000 with benefits." Rather than cutting people who are directly working with children, rather than cutting, I don't know, football, whatever, I don't know, couldn't we cut that particular position? It seems to me that the Board is violating its own policy. And, I mean, I could be wrong, but that's what it looks like it is. Additionally, I have an email that was handed to me, that, it's an email from, dated November 28th, from Ms. Bull to Mr. Capone. And it says basically that the Assistant Superintendent for the CIA, that's the curriculum instruction and whatever the A stands for, I guess, assessment. It says that she is really a coordinator, but she wanted the title because of her years of experience. Again, this seems a violation. I'm puzzled as to why we need all these people who are making a lot of money. We let go of 10 people who are making a lot less than these folks, and getting rid of even one of these positions, you could fund your 90-whatever-thousand dollars of 400 Chromebooks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Mark Wise, 400 South First. Ashley, congratulations, welcome to the Board. You guys made a stellar choice. So I'm from the magical world of West Windsor. I wish the people in my district could see this here, and they'd say, what? Talking about us? So I want to talk a little bit about the desire to purchase the new technology. And while I was sitting there, I was reminded of, this will all make sense, of a Woody Allen joke that he referenced in a movie of his, where he says, "Doctor, my brother thinks he's a chicken, and he's crazy." And the doctor says, "Why didn't you turn him in?" And the guy says, "Well, we need the eggs." I feel like that's where we are with the technology. There really wasn't a technology committee, per se. It was sort of dashed together, and I think that moving forward, I think there will be one. It sounds like there's a desire to. I really appreciate the plan that Tim put together and showed us a vision for where we're going that was sort of missing before, and I really like the vision of where it's going. But at the end of the day, and Adam, I know you raise these questions, I think that we need the devices, we need the eggs. We've got, if nothing else, I was just at a meeting for park testing, and it's going to be pretty serious, and we're going to need every device we could get to because of the online nature of the testing. And we don't have that infrastructure here. And so, while it might not be the best plan as we all see it right now, and we're not really sure how it's going to be implemented and where it's going to be, I have faith that this Board and this administration will make the best use of those resources, and it seems like they want to do something moving further. And so, I think you guys have a tough vote as a Board, because I know you know that these are needed. Again, it might not be the devices exactly that we want. The teachers, I agree, Adam, they need a projector in every room and a computer that works. And if park wasn't happening, I think we'd have more time to sort of think about these things. But it is coming down the pike. It may get delayed if the legislator has any sense, and we'll see how field testing goes. So far, it hasn't been great across the state. It's going to cause havoc on teaching and learning, and if your kids complained about Ask before, they're going to really complain about park. But those are going to require kids to be able to compose and edit and have a certain stamina on the keyboard that they don't currently have, and they're going to need practice with. And so, I do feel like we need something now, and if there's money available, that we need to fund it. The other thing I would say for the Board, I think it's really important that you decouple the Chromebook purchase from the eight-plus-percent increase. Because I know $115,000 out of a $31 million budget is like .0037%, if I did my calculations right. But the headlines coming out of this meeting, if it does pass, will be, "Board increases taxes by eight and a third with 400 Chromebooks." And somehow, we need to communicate that those two things are not one in the same. Because I really feel like that will be the headline that will gather the news. So I think it's important, in terms of messaging from community members, from the administration, that that's a really small piece of the overall budget. So, I just hope in moving forward, that we do reconvene the technology committee if it is passed, and we do move forward. And I appreciate Kim saying, coming to visit our school in Hillsborough, and our neighbor of Somerville has a one-to-one in their middle school. We're not there with one-to-one here, and we might not be there for several years, so it's going to look very different. But going around, getting parents and teachers sort of excited by what could be, I think is really healthy. And I think that, you know, while the plan is in place, I can tell you, two years from now, we're going to have very different purchases, because the technology always changes. So I think we can plan for the kind of learning that we want to take place, and then we'll figure out the hardware as we go. Because the hardware is always going to change, but what we want to do with technology won't. So, thank you guys for your tough choice tonight. Thank you, Tim, for putting together a really nice presentation. And thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Matthew Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue. Congratulations to Mr. Warden for joining the Board of Ed, and I'll, you had five excellent choices, and it's always encouraging, as somebody who attends a lot of municipal meetings, to see a good number of people step up, and I think that's what we want. I brought my laptop only because, only to keep my calendar open, because I'm tired, and I can't remember dates right now. I just wanted to say that the Borough's Public Information Committee meets this Thursday, March 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Senior Youth Center. And then, the next meeting of the Board of Ed's Communications Task Force meets April 2nd at 7:30, also at the Senior Youth Center. Please come to both meetings. We encourage the public to attend. The April 2nd meeting should be the last meeting of the Board of Ed's Communications Task Force before we offer our recommendations on April 7th. That's assuming that everything goes according to plan. And I just want to say, I hope the headline from tonight's meeting is not, is not, "Board Raises Budget 8% Due to $90,000 of Chromebooks." And an ideal headline would be, "Board Raises Budget 8% Because of Governor's Encouraging Fiscal Irresponsibility in a Time of Financial Crisis." I think that's really the appropriate headline that we should take away, and not the fact that there's $90,000 of Chromebooks being spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And this concerns item 25 on the agenda regarding the--
Under what, is that finance?
Excuse me?
Sorry. Item 25 under finance, I guess.
Just let us know, is it a finance report?
It has to be.
It has to be.
Which committee report?
It has to be. The 25 is the--
No, Item 25, which is the bank--
It's the bank cap funds.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you didn't let me get to that. The $1.4 million in bank cap funds, which are, you know, effectively the unspent taxes, which can be reserved for spending in the future. So about $776,000 of that applied to the three years leading up to the, you know, current year of 2013, '14, and the $598,000 of that, you know, of the $1.4 million applies to the future fiscal year of, you know, July 1st, 2014 to, you know, June 2015. So, you know, this is apart from the 2% cap for the same period. So, you know, it's just that the 598, you know, which is past the three years, it just has the appearance of double counting, and I just, you know, at some point, I think it'll need some more explanation. And again, just one other issue on that is that the bank cap fund, you know, the $1.4 million is about a 4% increase of total levy borough taxes. That's not just the school, but also the municipal and the county. So that's, you know, 4%, you know, as opposed to the, you know, total, you know, 6% from the, just the school portion. So as I said, this is before the imposition of the 2% regular cap increase. So, you know, all a part of it may be needed. I mean, I'm not questioning, you know, the, the need for a tax increase, but it, it still would be, you know, significant and, you know, burdensome to many taxpayers, you know, particularly fixed income. And so though it's, you know, within your, you know, power really to impose the bank cap fund amount, you know, unilaterally, I would strongly encourage you to engage the residents either directly through the vote, or at least through the Borough Council, and I think would, you know, show your respect and, you know, prevent the community alienation. Okay? Thank you.
Ben Kiwi, 110 North Fifth Avenue. On the technology, I agree that we need technology, but the question is, how many Chromebooks do we need? And I'll say, I substitute in a lot of districts, and a lot of districts have computers, and they're not, they're not just Chromebooks. They're like, I was in Manalapan the other day, they had, like, Apple All-in-One Computers, like, three or four in a classroom. I was in Jackson District I work in, and all of the teachers this year, every classroom got a new laptop for the, for the teacher's use. So I don't think Chromebooks are necessarily the way to go completely. Also, in Jackson, they have document cameras in every classroom, which is helpful. You were saying about projectors, document cameras with projectors are helpful, and you don't need computers to use those document cameras. So, I mean, Chromebooks are good. I don't know about 400, but some, it's a start. Whatever you guys can do would be good, but I don't know if Chromebooks are necessarily the best computers. I don't know.
Great.
Hi. Good evening. I'm actually just coming up--
If you could just state your name and your address, please.
Sure. I'm sorry. Brian Graff, 137 Hill Street. Sorry. So I just wanted to come up real quick as a follow-up to a comment that was made earlier about the issue of purchasing technology, specifically the 400 Chromebooks, and sort of the pressure of Park Testing. And so I just wanted to raise a couple of points. I think they've been raised before. I'm not necessarily an expert on these things, but I've certainly heard people say these things, which I think sort of bear on that specific question, which is, first of all, apparently there is, for instance, the option in the first year of having the Park Testing not done via the computer, but rather using pencil and paper, so postponing the implementation via, via technology. There is also sort of the issue of, which was actually also mentioned tonight, that, you know, the test is currently being piloted, right? There's also indications that there may be some openness on the part of the state around the issue of Park Testing and its implementation. And there's also the fact that, my understanding is, is that currently there are only 17 states who are currently participating in the Park Test, and that is a result of actually of some states pulling out after they previously were bought into participating in the test, and that in fact, if the participation drops to 15 states or less, the organization that came up with the Park Test and is implementing it would actually lose its funding, and that may actually result in the Park Test no longer being there at all. That just goes to say, you know, that I think there are a lot of different pieces around a specific issue like the Park Test that are worth thinking about whether the Park Test is a good motivation for making this decision. And I think, though, going beyond sort of the issue of the Chromebooks, I think just sort of picking up on Mr. Wharton's comment earlier in the meeting about, you know, an interest in and a need for pushing back against some of these sort of state mandates that are very troubling, that have been identified as troubling, including standardized testing, such as the Park Test, that thinking about these pieces, I think, sort of also are worth, you know, sort of considering as possible avenues for launching that kind of challenge, right? And so I would like to sort of pose to the Board and to the Administration, you know, the, the idea or the question, you know, can you, for instance, on this particular issue, given that there are these questions of, you know, a growing sort of dissatisfaction with the Park Test, the possibility that if New Jersey and another state pulls out of the Park Test, that in fact, that would mean that the Park Test would cease to exist, you know, is that something that we're, the Board and the Administration could maybe actually, you know, try to lead the community in looking at that possibility and taking a stand on the issue that many of us here, including from what I've heard, you know, some, some of the members of the Board are troubled by, right? The question of the Park Test and how it relates to the imposition of very stressful standardized testing on our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
If I could just add one thing. I think, I think, Tim, we did bring this up once, that you guys have looked at what we have, and in terms of what we need for Park, we're kind of already there. Am I remembering that incorrectly? That these, these 400 are not specifically going to be Park--
Whether Park exists or not has nothing in my mind to do with this, this purchase. This has to do with, are we preparing kids with the skills that they need to be successful moving forward? And technology is part of that, and we should be training them and, you know, providing that kind of access to them in all aspects. So again, where, you know, again, you wouldn't buy something that was not Park-compatible, okay? We're not making this purchase for Park.
Right. But specifically, you guys have run that analysis, and in terms of what the state says we would need for our students, the number we have--
So if you go with the minimum that you need, and you stretch it out over 20 days of testing, they set the, the minimum number that you'd like to have. What they do recommend is that, you know, the, the best scenario is that you have one student for the largest grade level that's going to be testing.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
If, if you were going with the lowest number that you could possibly get away with, okay? You would say that's a, it's a 20-day window for testing--
Gotcha.
--and then you would figure out what that number is to have all your students test within that window. What they recommend is that--
And that's over--
--so you would have a grade-level test, that you would have a number of computers for at least two grade levels--
Right.
--okay, being at the highest number that they have, so that all kids can test within that time.
Like our highest, like 120, right? Something like that. So 120 plus 120, something like that.
Again, I, I mean, I, I'm not linking the--
Right. I, I, I get--
This is not for Park Testing.
I believe you. I believe you.
No, but if we run that analysis, where do we fall out on that? Do we, are we 20 days? Are we 10 days? Are we, like, where are we?
You're asking the question without this purchase.
Without this purchase, with what we currently have--
I, I don't know. Again, that's, that's not a motivating factor in this purchase, so--
I just think it would be an interesting piece of information to have. With what we have today, where are we just in terms of compliance? Just as one small piece of the, the overall larger puzzle.
Excuse me. Andrew Zappa, 131 Johnson Street. Congratulations, Ashley. To the point of technology, I might ask, if there's going to be more technology initiatives where the public is allowed to attend, can it be done at a time where those of us who work real jobs, you know, that have like nine to five hours can actually attend? Because I did want to join, not real jobs, it's, it's a wrong thing to say, so I apologize. You know, I did want to attend that technology meeting, but I had to excuse myself, because it met at 3:15, and I work in Manhattan, so it wasn't something I could attend. But moving on to budget items with regards to technology, the technology professional for the district mentioned something very interesting during his discussion. The bandwidth upgrade has been completed, from what I understand, but he hasn't yet locked down the school network. So there's devices out there using up school bandwidth. If they had been locked down in advance of purchasing the upgrade, you might not have needed it. Just a thought that I want to put out there. And maybe a way to approach things going forward is, have we done everything necessary before we need to go out and buy new things? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Robert Slavich, 123 Magnolia Street. Very quickly, one of the things that I, Adam, I really think is great, the way you were questioning what was going on. One of your policies is to have a technology plan in place before you go out and make these purchases. You guys have made great strides towards getting there. I think you have, what you said, till June 30th to make your determination on these Chromebooks. You pretty much convinced me that at some point, we're going to be making some sort of purchase towards Chromebooks, but I'm still not sure what that number is, because I don't see a technology plan in place. One of the other things you did was you kept comparing ourselves to West Windsor Plainsboro, and Mr. Lassiter was like, "I'm not going there. That's Disney Worlding. I want to see something that we can attain." One of the things that I think you was missing, and I think one of the reasons you need to send them there, is because what you guys proposed this evening was a one-to-one technology plan for every student in the district, and I don't know what the timeframe is--
Three.
--I don't know if it's three years. I assume that's what the technology plan is supposed to be. West Windsor Plainsboro over the next three years is going to have a one-to-one technology plan for 5th grade to 8th grade, not for every student in the district. If we do that, we're surpassing West Windsor Plainsboro. We'll be Disney World, not them. I think we need to have a technology plan in place, figure out where we're going, and then make those votes and get the technology that we need for our district here, but we need to do it conscientiously and thinking, you know, forthrightly. I also want to question right now, if you look at E-Rate Central, I know, Linda, I believe you're on top of that, one of the things I've seen there is that you put in for dispersments for the funding for our internet. I saw that it was about $112,000, about the same as it was last year, even though we're expanding our bandwidth, and I'm wondering if there wasn't more funding we could have gone for. I'm also want to know, I was wondering, were the $350,000 of undispersed funds, if that's money that we lost out on, or just money that we're optimistic about, or if there's $350,000 there that we could actually attain and offset some of the expenses that we're looking at for our technology? Thank you very much.
Do you mean 350 from E-Rate?
$350,000 from E-Rate listed as undispersed funds for last year and the year before. Sorry, one more thing. I did ask for the Park Assessment from the district, and supposedly I should get it by the end of this month, so if we actually did run that assessment tool, hopefully I will have it in hand, and I'll share it with anyone who wants it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Matt Hirsch again, 333 Felton. I'm sorry, I'm usually not a repeat offender, so I apologize. And actually, I was so tired when I got up here before, I didn't finish writing my name, so now I did. I just wanted to, I, I did just want to make, make one point regarding the Communications Task Force. One of our recommendations is likely going to be, a recommendation that we've heard before at the, at the PTO, you know, at the, at the PTO forum, that allows for other task forces to, to be developed, like ours, like the Tech Task Force. And certainly, you know, we, we went in with, with no, with, with, with certain objectives, but certainly no, no prejudices. And while our, while, while, while how we conducted our business and how we identified our goals and how we put together the task force is not, is, is, I'm not holding that up to be the blueprint, you know, I did hear some, some concerns about the Technology Task Force and how that was assembled. So, you know, when, when we're, as part of our recommendations, it would be, you know, we would appreciate any feedback, certainly from the Board and the Administration, as to how to most effectively assemble those subcommittees, so there is a workable solution. So, so, so this is a, you know, an objective that is actually achievable. That's it. Thank you.
Bobby David Kumar, Cedar Avenue. I just had a couple of quick questions. So the first is, I just wanted to understand if this is the first reading of the technology survey from the staff. I just sort of wanted to understand how your, I guess, numbers of one and a half million were sort of factored into, in terms of what your projected budget was going to be for the 2014, 2015 technology numbers. And I think to Mr. Capone and, and Mr. Mariste's question on the device being Park-ready, I did send a document about two weeks ago that sort of outlined that, along with the reference from Park on that, and I think Mr. Capone is correct. It's, I think, one device for every school with the largest grade, and I think if you assume 120 students at the bartle, at the middle school and the high school, it's about 360, you know, devices in all for Park. And so to Mr. Capone's point, I do think that we are ready. There was a deal we report that came out that said that we were device-ready for Park as well, so these new purchases do, do seem to be for non-Park-related items. But however, in light of that, I do think it's important to understand for the community how this budget increase is going to play into the fact that, you know, the, the overall technology plan in general, particularly in light of the fact that, you know, we did riff 10 employees back in November, which should have, you know, which were used, from our understanding, for items such as textbooks and technology. So with the existing, you know, tax increase and these riffed employees, I think that sort of macro understanding would be helpful for all of us. In addition, and I did bring this up at the technology meeting that I was at on March 12th, you know, to the extent that we are moving forward with technology, I do think it's important for us to understand how the curriculum is going to play in with the technology. I think moving in a direction where the technology drives the curriculum, as opposed to the curriculum driving the technology, is one that probably doesn't make sense overall, and it was discussed as part of that meeting as well. And I do just want to make sure it's understood, and hopefully we will get more clarification in future meetings with the Board, on how the, the budget's going to sort of flush out. I'm sure you're aware of the fiscal accountability, efficiency, and budgeting procedures that outlines in specificity that the school district must provide by clear and convincing evidence at the anticipated dollar amount of the expenditure for each tax levy adjustment sought is reasonable. So I do look forward to the future meetings where you guys outline and delineate this a little bit further, and, and walk through some of those line items in more detail.
Thank you, Bobby. Is there any other public comment? Okay, so we're on the Board Action Items. Claire, we're going to start with you.
Yes. For curriculum, I would like to move Items 1 through, where's the end? 1 through 11.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the curriculum and Instruction Committee items? Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Worton?
Yes.
Catherine?
I'd like to move items one through 31.
On the...
On the finance agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have...my concerns remain. I think we're moving too fast with the Chromebooks, and as much as I really do believe we need 400 Chromebooks, I don't think we need them in this amount this quickly, and I will not be supporting the Chromebooks for tight.
Just wanted to weigh in a little bit on the whole Chromebook thing, but before I throw some of my thoughts, I just had a quick question. What are the...on item 14, what are the Google Management Consoles? I assume they're a pretty critical piece of the equation. I'm just curious what they are.
I believe it allows the instructional staff, the teachers, to coordinate the devices within the classroom, I believe.
It's like a license. It enables them to access the apps.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, this is just kind of going through some of the thought process here on the Google stuff. I started from the perspective, when I saw this on the agenda, last week, feeling very skeptical, again, about 400 laptops, because I couldn't quite figure out how to connect the dots. And in the last week, I've gone from being very skeptical to feeling more supportive of doing this, primarily because one of the things that's been pointed out to me on a number of occasions is that we have 537...is that the right number?
Sixty-seven.
Okay, we have 500-plus computers that are end-of-life, they're done. That means they're, for all intents and purposes, useless. They're not even good web browsers these days. You can't run a reasonable Flash program on them. You can't run Skype on them reliably. There's a lot of applications...I mean, Skype is something that Mr. Lassiter brought up, but, you know, the web, using the internet, using a browser to go to a news site, to go to CNN, to go to do research on papers, whatever it is, you know, just the kind of things that I take for granted, that I do at work all the time, or that I do at home all the time, when I have a question about something. These are things the 500-some-odd computers can't do. The 400 computers that we're talking about buying are essentially web tools. There are nothing better than a web tool. They give you a window into the internet and they allow you to browse news sites. They allow you to browse virtually anything that's out there, and anything that's a pure web application is in all likelihood going to work on the Chromebook. And the other nice part about the solution that, as I thought about it, was that we're not really even committing to hardware on this. I mean, the Chromebook as a device just happens to be a cheap device, but as a software platform, it's not really a software platform. We are committed to the Google suite of apps, except that you can use the Google suite of apps on a Windows machine. You can use the Google suite of apps on your Mac. You can use those apps on any device that you really want to use them on. Google, as far as I know, I'm not being a preacher for Google by any stretch of the imagination, I'm just trying to think this through about what are we really committing to? What are we really talking about investing in? We are committed to the Google suite of apps. We've been committed to the Google suite of apps for a couple of years now. That's something that happened a while ago. We use the Google Drive, people share it around. I've heard good stories from Mr. Lassiter today about how students and teachers collaborate with it. I can't help but feel a little bit skeptical about how wide the adoption is across the district, but I believe him when he says that it's a great collaborative tool, and if everybody gets the right training, they're going to be able to do really well with it. So that had me feeling really good about it. And the comments from Mark Wise about, "We're kind of in a bind, we've got to figure something out." There's...we need to get the technology in front of the teachers so that they can start using it, in front of the kids so they can start using it. Problem is, is that we heard from our union president, and frankly, I felt like we got a ridiculously lukewarm response from the teachers on this. And I don't know how to deal...I don't know how to reconcile a lukewarm reception from the teachers on this.
Slow down.
So I mean, that's the question. I don't know, should we slow this down? Should we push them through? Does it make sense to the teachers? Do we need to let the teachers know that they should just trust us on this? I don't know. They're asking to be involved in the equation, they say they support it. We've heard them say they desperately need technology. I don't want to slow the delivery of technology down, I really don't. And the Google devices, I mean, like I was saying, the device is meaningless, and frankly, this is probably the cheapest device that we can get that would deliver us the web services. So, you know, we're not going to do much better than this in terms of finding a reasonable price point. iPads aren't cheaper than this, and frankly, they're ridiculously hard to manage when you're sharing them among students. Windows devices, well, they might be reasonably manageable, but they're at least twice as expensive, if not more expensive. Apple devices, I mean, Macintoshes, I mean, you're not going to get a good price point for those. So that's my thought process. I don't know how to reconcile it. I'm throwing it out to you guys to see if you have any thoughts on that.
Well, I mean, for me, I mean, I can speak for myself. For me, the process is very important as well. And for me, if...I mean, I agree with Adam, I'm not ready to do this tonight, but even for me, that doesn't mean no to 400 Chromebooks. That just means I want a little bit more time to take what we heard from Kim into consideration, to flesh that out a little bit, to have a couple more Technology Committee meetings. It's not saying that in two meetings from now, or three meetings from now, I might not be ready to do it. It says, "I'm just feeling like this is too rushed right now." We just got very interesting feedback from Kim. I think we need time to absorb it.
You know, I'd be totally happy with moving a few carts tonight, you know, 100 Chromebooks, something like that, 200, not even 200. I'd be happy with, you know, I want to find teacher leaders and train them before we provide the whole kit and caboodle in one spot. Let's just look.
No, I mean, I...what I heard actually was that they...maybe they weren't, you know, like yay or nay to exactly the Chromebook, but that they want technology and they have the need for that. And I felt a sense of urgency, actually, from what everybody was saying. I also feel that we've had such an urgency for years that, you know, we know we've been in this technological bind and that we've needed it, and just, you know, nothing's been done. And I feel like we're just...it's just going to still keep delaying. And I know we have till June 30th, so maybe we're thinking it's only, you know, another couple of months away, but I mean, I still think it's something that we need to...
Yeah, I think a couple of months is like...
And I think, well, and I also, Adam, I just wanted to say, I know, I appreciate you, I know how difficult this is for you.
Yeah.
We're like this fear head of technology, so...
I just, I truly do believe in technology. I truly believe we need 400 Chromebooks, if not, you know, 1,600 Chromebooks, one for each student. But I heard the teachers say that they could implement it tomorrow, and this has nothing to do with the quality of our teachers, because I think it's excellent. But if they don't have the training and they don't have the knowledge of the apps and all that, can they really implement it well tomorrow?
But it won't take training, it's not right, it's not like a monthly training. I mean, there's...
In the Curriculum Committee Report...
A few hours or...I mean, I don't know, I'm just...
In the Curriculum Committee Report, and in our meeting tonight, there was discussion about training that is already scheduled on Google Apps.
Right.
And so, I mean, this is something that's moving forward already.
Right. But that wouldn't go to waste. I mean, we do already have Chromebooks in the district.
The only thing I would add in, though, is that the number that stuck out to me is 85% could implement it right away or in a very short period of time.
But what does that mean? I...that's my kind of point.
That they can use it for an instructional purpose, that they're going to start integrating into the classroom.
I guess the only...my question, I think...
There's a web browser, is that it?
My question here is, the takeaway from me, or from the comments that were made, the PD and the training, providing opportunities for teachers to go on-site visits and being able to see how they're being used in other places. And then the question was, I guess, the infrastructure question. If we bring in 400 Chromebooks, you know, in three weeks or however long it takes, can 400 Chromebooks be used the day that they're unboxed? And will there be any, you know, technical delays with that, which might then actually sort of have a backlash against those devices?
Again, we've upgraded the legs, the speed, I mean, that's why we did those things in conjunction with this, is to make sure that you had that infrastructure. You know, as far as what the rollout time would be, I mean, again, that would be a Brian question as far as what it would take. In the conversations I had, he said it was, if you have a Google ID that logging in, like you guys do every day, it's pretty simple. So that it really shouldn't be that hard to roll it out.
Probably about 10 to 15 minutes per device.
Right.
So the constraint would be the availability of IT resources, unless there's volunteers involved.
Well, I mean, going back to the slowness, I mean, this is just kind of...we have 500 or 500 or more, nearly 500 useless computers that do need to be replaced, and if we had ever devoted any money to this in the past, we wouldn't be finding ourselves in this position, but we haven't really devoted any money to it. I, you know, this is me just kind of waffling, openly waffling back and forth between what's the right decision to make in this case, because I think this is...the kids need to be able to browse the web. I mean, forgetting about some of the, what are we going to do curriculum-wise? Are they going to use Study Island on the Google machines? I think they probably will. Is that...do we need to be convinced that they're going to use Study Island on these machines to think that they're going to be put to good use? That's one of the things where I step back and say, "I'm not even sure I need to be convinced of that."
Well, I think another piece, though, that we haven't taken into consideration is the Bring Your Own policy, and how that's going to be implemented and across what grades, and how that would play into it if we've got X number of students who are bringing their own devices, that reduces the number of devices that we would need to have on hand for students. I just, I think there are pieces of the puzzle that haven't been put together yet.
I think that's a good question, but I mean, I would prioritize, you know, classroom technology over Bring Your Own. Absolutely.
Well, no, she's saying that if you, like, a class of 24 will only need 12 Chromebooks at 12 half...
So 400 would actually have a much wider breadth then of use, actually.
I don't know if you want to insert this into the conversation, but this is the technology survey.
Yeah, I read that. That was very, very interesting.
Parents?
I prefer not...I would prefer not to insert that into the conversation right now.
Yeah, let's...
I read it. It's not, you know, it's not...
Yeah, I'm sure you wouldn't.
Yeah. It's not favorable to my opinion. To be honest with you.
Are there any other...does anybody have any other discussion for the Finance Committee?
I just want to say that I'm happy that we're not buying Chromebooks for the park test, and I'm happy that we are using, wanting to use them in an instructional way in the classroom.
I am...I would love to see us halve this motion, you know, if that's a compromise. I just, I really don't understand how this board's justifying 400 Chromebooks in one fell swoop, which does not seem to be tied to actual...
But let me ask you this. I understand, I totally understand where you're coming from, Adam. I get it. But the thing that I keep coming back to is that come, whatever the date is, April 15th, I'll pick Tax Day, because I know it's not Tax Day, but it's somewhere around that time, all, and I know it's not all 500 of the machines, but all of our XP machines need to be turned off, right? Rob is shaking his head. They don't need to be turned off because they'll still essentially be usable, but they will no longer be supported, and we're going to be running completely, you know, on our own with those devices. I don't even know how usable those devices are to begin with. That's a different question entirely, but we have a fleet of equipment that is nearing, if it hasn't already hit, the end of its useful life, and that number is in excess of 400. We're not talking about, I mean, and this is the part of the process where I start sounding like an advocate for the 400, not a skeptic, and I do feel somewhat skeptical about this, but we're talking about replacing 500-some-odd machines with 400. There's another side of the conversation that could be saying, "Why are we only buying 400 machines? If there are 500-some-odd machines out there that should be being used by the kids, why aren't we buying more, not less?"
And I completely agree with every sentiment you just said.
Okay, so, but see, this is where, this is where I...you're saying, "Let's slow down, let's slow down," and I get it, I understand, but on the same token, Mike Lassiter got up and made a very clear case to how, at least in the middle school, his teachers are going to make use of this technology right out of the box. And we've heard that the Bardo School is in desperate need of this technology. And are we going, you know, we can have longer discussions about this, we can wait, and I, you know, I guess I could live with waiting for another week if we had to vote on it, but I don't know how much good it does us at this point. That's my question.
The general idea of my question is, is this the best technology to buy right now, today?
What's the alternative?
My suggestion is projectors.
Okay, but then if we didn't buy 400 computers, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, and we bought projectors, then essentially, we'd be down 500 computers and we'd have a bunch of projectors.
But we can fund that, we can fund this, we can fund 400 Chromebooks out of next year's budget.
But then we're a year behind. I feel that this is a really good...
Shifting priorities.
Okay, so I think this is a good start. I think the 400 Chromebooks is a good start, and that the Technology Committee can work on a further plan. Projectors are not going to put technology in the hands of the children, which is what Mike Lassiter just stood up and said. I think that the need is for kids to get their hands on the computers. I've watched my son, I mean, he doing his homework, and I know, you know, how fond I am of technology, but it's absolutely essential that these kids know how to use it, and it is a good sharing device. They, you know, they share their documents. I want to move forward with this, and then I want to see what the Technology Committee puts together with the administration, moving forward in the next couple of years, so that we can plan to build up our capacity.
I will end right here with my last statement and just say that I am an advocate for bringing our technology budget to $300,000, which is 1% of our overall budget, but I want it done, and I want us to buy technology with an intended goal of where we're going, why we're doing it, and what's the education leaves. And I just, I don't see that right now. And right now, we're in a unique position. We made decisions that put us in this position, that I fully support. I just think we should take our time to make sure we're using all of that money properly.
And I just want to say, Catherine, to your point about the committee, I think I would have been, having gone to the second meeting, if I had seen more of that kind of collaboration that you're talking about happen at that second meeting, it would have been easier for me to get behind this tonight, like, but it felt like there was a foregone conclusion going into the committee meeting, and that's what came out of the committee meeting. So there wasn't, at this juncture, there wasn't that collaboration that I was looking for, too, and that's mainly where my hesitation's coming from. And now we're voting on this at 1 o'clock in the morning, and I don't know that we're all as clear as maybe we should be to make this vote for a purchase.
And I just want to say, I commend Tim. You know, I don't think that he's expecting me to say that, but I think you've done a great job of articulating your vision. Just my vision is a little bit different.
Is there any other discussion? Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes to all, but abstain from number 10.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
No to 13 through 17, and...sorry, give me one moment.
31.
And no to 31, and yes to the rest.
Mr. Dietz? Mr. Dietz?
He's thinking.
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No to 11 through 17, no to 31, yes to the rest.
Mr. Worton?
Yes.
Ann?
I would like to move items one through 10 on the regular agenda and items 11 and 12 on the addendum.
Second.
Can I just ask about 10? That was something that we had in...
No, we're just talking about 11 on the addendum here.
No, I'm talking about 10.
Oh, okay.
Is there any discussion?
I just, I want to understand what that means, that a substitute coordinator...
They requested to bring her back for an additional day, for a transfer, to have a, have them there at the same time.
Oh, so 10 is just like a one-day thing? Okay.
Is there any other discussion on the Personnel Committee report? Linda?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Borton?
Yes.
I'd like to move items 1 through 2 on the policy agenda.
That's her second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Borton?
Yes.
So for the President's Report, the first thing I want to do is, I just want to congratulate Ashley. We welcome you to the Board, and we also welcome you to the Curriculum Committee. So Linda, if you could just make a note that Ashley will serve on the Curriculum Committee. We very much look forward to working with you until the end of the year.
Likewise.
Thank you. I also just want to make mention of the, the change in the order of the agenda, which I think was a positive thing for us, to be able to hear the comments from the public, and from Kim Crane, and from others who are interested prior to our making our decisions and moving these items. I think it definitely helped inform the Board on its decision-making process, and I'm, I'm glad that we're going to be moving forward in this, in this way in the future. I have a couple of items to speak about. The, the first after, after those two is, I just want to say that I'm very excited to welcome the new Irving principal to the district, Kelly Wysozanski. It was a, as far as I understand, it was a very collaborative hiring process, and she has a great resume in early childhood education. This is really, as we've spoken about for many years, Irving is where we lose students to the charter schools. And to have someone who is inspiring, to have someone who is articulate, who can really put forth a, a positive vision, who can get things like the website in order, so that, you know, parents who are interested can, can actually see something that's valuable about the district, someone who can run the open house in a really positive and supportive and warm manner, I'm very excited about all of those things. So I very much look forward to her working with us and, and joining the team. While we're on the subject of elementary schools, I do want to just talk about the James Monroe Elementary School situation, which was, I'm sure that everybody is aware of the situation. The elementary school was, was destroyed by a fire over this past weekend. The theory, I guess, at this point is that there was a cigarette, a lighted cigarette in a, in a trash can, which actually might have caused the entire flame, the entire fire. But as a town, I know that we're a very supportive group of community members, and certainly the, the folks in Edison can use our support. And so the students are going to be housed at Middlesex County College, and there was a letter that was sent out by Susan Adato today that was sent by Danielle Thorne, who's one of the Bartle School teachers, about how you can get involved with donations and that sort of thing. So I would urge Board members, you know, to communicate this to folks in the community, and everybody who's watching at home, and all of you who have braved the night air to stay with us tonight. If you go to, you can take a look at that piece of it, if you aren't a parent of a school child at this point, you can also go to the James Monroe Elementary School website, and there are three contact names that are listed there, and they're the people that you would contact for making direct donations. And they're going to be in Middlesex County College, which means that they need new supplies for, for all of the students that are there. They weren't able to be housed within the other elementary schools, the other schools in the district, because of space constraints, so they're basically going to be starting from scratch. So as a Highland Park community, I know that we can certainly help the Edison community, you know, let your friends know, let anybody that you know who has access to any of those kinds of things, that this is certainly a dire situation that, that we can assist with. And then the last thing I want to just talk about is the budget. As the Board President, it makes me very unhappy to sit up here at a table when we're talking about an 8% increase in the budget. And when I first heard that number, my jaw dropped to the floor, and when I saw the numbers, it just, it's so bleak in one way, and it sort of comes as the result of, you know, two years of, of serious, serious austerity. And I think that there's, there's no one really to blame for the, the situation that we're in at this point. Superintendent had certain priorities, and the Finance Committee was interested in fiscal responsibility, and these are certainly noble goals for us to have. We can see with Tim's presentation that small incremental increases over the past few years would have gotten us about to where we are at this point, and people wouldn't have felt it, you know, in such a direct way. But this is where we are now. And so the past few years, this austerity has really been very deep cuts in the school budgets, a basic lapse, absence of technology, which has been expressed by about everybody under the sun, huge increases in health benefits costs, which is not unique to the district, but certainly something that, as we sat in, in Board discussions for the last few years, we all had this discussion, well, if health benefits are going up 12%, how can we only raise our, our budget 2%? How is that something that we can do that's actually fiscally responsible? We have increases in the charter school payments that we have to budget for next year, and huge increases in special education that have to be budgeted for next year. And as we look forward, certainly promoting Irving School as a really wonderful place that it can be certainly is one way to bring students back from charter schools. Improving the programs that we have in special education is, is an excellent way that we can bring students back to the district, and we're talking about students who, to send out of district are 70,000 or 80,000 dollars or even more per year, and that is a really significant piece of, of the budget. But of course, we have to provide them with the high-quality education that they, that they need. And so, you know, these are the kinds of things, looking forward, that, that we can actually look at providing in, in an attempt to get on a better sort of fiscal footing. In addition to that, Darcy mentioned 4.9 million dollars in underfunding from the state of New Jersey. And again, this is not something that's unique to our district, but this is something that really has affected us tremendously. We find ourselves at a very difficult position right now, as do many Boards of Education across the county, across the state. There are a lot of people who are in the 5, 6, 7% range from, you know, from the information that we've gotten from the county superintendents, and it's, it's, it's not a great situation for, for anybody. That being said, you know, these kinds of forums are really important for us in terms of the feedback that's offered. We, we will have our own conversations, and we will have many conversations about the way that we want to move forward, but certainly, the public's input on this is very important, and we hope that we continue to hear your voices with regards to areas of need, such as the World Languages Program that we're, that, that Ann spoke about, or areas that you think that, that we can cut back. So again, I, I encourage you to take a look at the numbers that are released in the budget presentation when it makes its way onto the website, and come to the next Board meeting, all of us, all of you, with feedback in that regard. And that's it. So we are on to old business.
So the, the first piece is the current calendar. There was a request made to have a delayed opening on the Easter Monday, that this has been a past practice, to allow people, to allow us to count it as a school day, but bring staff and students in on a delayed opening.
So we need to give them the day before as a, we need to do the day before spring break and the day after spring break as a delayed opening?
Yes.
So you're, that's your recommendation, or is that what you think we should do?
Yes.
Wait, the day before spring break is a delayed opening? Or is it a half day?
The day before is an early dismissal.
Yeah, yeah.
The day coming back would be a delayed opening.
You say, it's 1:00 in the morning, you can say whatever you want.
So, okay.
No one's going to hold it against you.
Then I'm okay with that.
This is a request from the Teachers Union.
Yes.
Okay.
No problem.
That's fine with me. Do we need to vote to change the calendar? Linda?
Did we vote on the last?
This is another change.
Yeah, I know, but did we vote on the change before? And that's the only change?
Sorry.
I would like to move that we changed the calendar to reflect a delayed opening on the day after spring break.
April 21st.
April 21st.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Not a second.
Ready for me? Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Borton?
Yes.
For next year's calendar, again, we've had some discussion about the 4th and the 5th. I had started with a recommendation of having four professional development days to start the year, based on the changes that are being made and the training that we'd like to offer to staff. At the last meeting, we had moved that to two half-days. Again, we've had the requests come back from the union of that being full days for professional development.
And so that means either.
Right, how's that going to affect?
That there's two less days of instruction.
Or we pay for it.
Or we pay.
Well, again, I mean, I, I think, I think this is the, the conversation where we left it at the last time, which is the value of 182 days with three days of professional development essentially, two at the beginning and one to close up at the end, where the value of having, instead of two additional student days, having two additional professional development stays. Again, I mean, I proposed it at the beginning because I, I think it's important for our staff to be able to come in and have the proper training and, you know, make sure that we're, we're starting off on the right foot to start the year, and that, you know, everything is in place. And I, I think four days does that. There was, I, I was also contacted by some teachers at Irving that were talking about, you know, the half-day schedule, what that means for pre-K, you know, when they would actually start and what that would look like. But again, I, I think that there's, you know, that there are enough things and enough needs that we have for professional development that, again, I would, I would like to see that be 180 student days and four professional development days to start the year.
I agree with that, because there's going to be a lot of new curriculum for the teachers to have to learn and understand, and.
Yeah.
Time upfront is, is worth it.
I, I think those are all important, I'm just not, I'm not willing to change the philosophy of this district to have 100, of having 182 days, we pay for those days. If that's what we want to change, we should talk about it in terms of negotiations and other, and other items.
If we made the 4th and the 5th be professional development days, would we still need the 13th, let's say, as a half-day? Or would there be, because I know, you've talked about, you know.
So here, and, and this is the trouble with the half-days, because of the way that things are staggered, and you have a half-hour between Irving and Bartle, if you're doing elementary training, okay, you can't use the same person to do it, because there's a, it's a half-hour off. You know, it's less of a problem at the secondary level, because it's only 10 minutes. So, you know, we, we found it to be difficult on those half-days as far as setting up the trainers and having multiple trainers to be able to address that. So the two full days at the beginning are significantly more valuable than those half-days for, for professional development.
So if you were going to make the 4th and the 5th professional development days, you would make the 13th, would you also make March 9th a full day?
You could. I mean, again, I think that the most important training is going to be upfront. I think it's going to have the biggest impact.
Okay.
And then how, does this, how does it, or does it at all affect the end of school?
No, no, it doesn't.
Cutting down to 180 days, so we're still ending.
Yes.
Is there a need for us to make this decision tonight?
Yeah.
Not tonight.
Can we put this off?
Yeah, put this off.
If we push it to the 7th, we, the, the calendar has to be finalized on the 7th.
So at the next meeting, it has to be finalized?
Yes.
So we're going to, we're going to keep this as is, and then move from this point on the 7th?
Let's have a fresh discussion.
Okay, can I just have, and it's, it's probably me with it, for clarification, right, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks like potentially the last day of school would be on the 18th, but then if we have the three, that, that allows for three snow days, so then that brings us the last day to the 23rd?
23.
But then it says graduation's on the 25th, so I'm confused.
This is allowing for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 snow days? This, this calendar's allowing for 5?
Well, again, this is not, this is not adjusted based on, you, you, right now, you have.
I think that graduation's on the wrong day.
There's three days built in at the end. Oh, I'm sorry, there's an error, there's an error on the calendar.
Okay.
It's, it's three days from where we had it before, and then an additional three days where you see that graduation is.
Yeah, I think you're right.
There's an error on that calendar.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be three days up.
So we'll have that corrected for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to table this.
No, we don't.
We don't?
There's no motion on the table.
Okay. Then let's just not move it. Bring Your Own Technology Survey.
So the, the Bring Your Own Technology Survey went out, there were 209, I guess, responses, and it was 51.9% that said yes, that students should be able to use their own technology in the classroom, and 48.6% that said no.
And this was pre-K through 8?
Yes.
But who were the respondents? Teachers or parents?
Parents.
Parents. Only parents. Yes?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry to do this, can I, can we talk about this next time, too? I mean, do we need to talk about this right now?
It's on the agenda. If you want to table it, we can table it.
It's after 1.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, I agree with you.
Move it on over.
Is there any other old business?
Can we take this with us, though? Yes.
The only thing that I want to bring up very quickly is that, Dan, over, between now and the next meeting, I'd like to work with you on the idea of resolutions that we had talked about, about underfunded mandates. I'd like to get something that we can present at the next meeting, but I don't want to discuss it for even a millisecond.
I had a, I had a little interruption.
And Ashley, I know this is something you're interested in, so I'd love to include you in that conversation.
Is there any other old business? Is there any new business?
Uh, very quickly? Oh, go ahead.
I have one thing, and it's a resolution that I would like us to adopt, and I think everybody has a copy of it. Linda gave it to us in the beginning of the evening.
No, please, you can.
You have it.
Well, I'm just going to read it, okay? So take a listen. It's a resolution in honor of the 350th anniversary of New Jersey. Whereas the year 214 will mark the 350th anniversary of the charter conveying all lands, all the lands between the Connecticut River and the east side of the Delaware River from Charles II to James, Duke of York, and whereas the year 2014 will also mark the 350th anniversary of the execution of deeds or release by the said James, Duke of York, to John Lord Berkeley, of the execution of deeds or release by the said James, Duke of York, to John Lord Berkeley, Baron of Stratton, and Sir George Carteret of Saltram of these lands, which said tract of land is hereafter to be called by the name or names of Nova Caseria, yeah, or New Jersey, and the rights of government therein, and whereas the year 2014 will also be the 350th anniversary of the signing and publication by John Lord Berkeley and Sir George Carteret of the concessions and agreements of the lords proprietors of the province of New Casera of New Jersey to and with all the adventurers and all such as shall settle or plant here a declaration of the organic law of the colony and truly the magnet carda, that's a typo, which I will fix, of New Jersey. And whereas the foregoing events mark the beginning of the separate history of New Jersey as a colony, and whereas it is fitting and desirable that we commemorate these beginnings of our state, together with its subsequent history and its present and future role in the family of the United States for the benefit of all the peoples of New Jersey and the nation, with particular focus on the core values that have shaped our state and the borough of Highland Park. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Highland Park, 1, the Board of Education of Highland Park celebrates the 350th anniversary of New Jersey as a colony, and 2, the Board of Education of Highland Park urges all the citizens of Highland Park to reflect upon the significance of this event and the role that our state and its citizens have played in the history and development of our nation, and to participate in this important commemoration.
Huzzah.
So we're skipping the part about...
Thank you, Claire.
I'll second that, the resolution.
Is there any discussion about the resolution in honor of the 350th anniversary of New Jersey? Thank you, Claire, for bringing this to the Board. Linda?
So I need a mo, oh, did you second?
I seconded.
Come on now, Linda.
This is when I start getting fuzzy on who moved and who seconded. Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Borton?
Yes.
I just have one quick thing. I think we need to take the budget show on the road like we always do. I want to make sure that we're still doing that. PTO meetings, full presentations before, by the superintendent, by the administration, by the Board. And I would also recommend that we have an informal meeting, like I think I forwarded it to you and Tim. Woodbridge is having a number of them. It's a meeting of the Board, but it's a work session where people are allowed to have conversations with the Board around the budget. I think we should have planned at least one of those. I will resend you the motion that I sent you guys for further clarification on that.
Thank you, Adam. Is there any other new business? The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. If you'd like to make public comment, please state your name and your address and write your information in.
Hi, Denise May, 314 Wayne Street. I mean, sorry, Denise May Friar. So you've adopted these Chromebooks that are Google. My question is, what safeguards are there against Google data mining of my children? Can you answer that?
Can, I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
Sure. You've adopted now that you're going to buy these Google Chromebooks, that's fine. What safeguards are there to prevent Google, which is a known data miner, from mining data on my two 11-year-olds?
While there may not be any safeguards that are 100% guarantee, the Google site that describes their role in education and Google Apps, it does say, it doesn't, they do not use the same methodology that they use for the general public.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So we're purchasing Google Apps, so it's a paid application. Google mines your data when you're using them as a free platform. So by buying into the Google Apps and on the site where Google advertises apps for education, there is a stipulation there that says that they will not use the data in the same way. They won't mine your data. Now, can we guarantee that? No.
But they are collecting data.
It, no, it doesn't say that. It says that they're basically, they're not, because this isn't a free platform. But again, you can't guarantee it. There's no guarantees.
Thank you. Ashley, that's interesting. Thank you.
Can you make something to the public? I'm sure I'm not the only parent who would be concerned by this.
And what is the concern?
My children's information being mined by Google. I mean, I use DuckDuckGo, for example, for my own searches because I'm opposed to Google knowing everything about me, even though it probably does. Big Brother is Google, in my opinion. But I really, I mean, they're 11 years old. If the data is secure, it's less of a problem, I think, for me and other people, but I really am opposed to my children's data being used by Google in any way, shape, or form. Thank you. And thank you for doing your jobs.
Thank you, Denise. Is there any other public comment at this time?
Sorry, Robert Lewicz, 123 Magnolia Street. Greg, Adam, Darcy, thank you for your discourse and your discussion earlier this evening. Because, you know, I am concerned about purchasing the computers in advance of the technology plan being in place. I understand, though, you know, the overall concern about, you know, the other computers and trying to rotate them out and replace them and still keep technology in the hands of the students, you know, for the rest of the school year. And I appreciate you guys, you know, rifling through it, trying to figure it out and thinking it through, you know, in advance of making a decision. And I just really hope that you guys put a technology plan together by the end of this year, by June 30th, whatever the date is, but sometime very soon. I do have a concern where you're looking, the technology plan that you guys had from last year was nine pages. West Winders Plan is 14 pages. I do, I am concerned that, you know, you guys are planning a one-to-one plan for all of our students when, right now, you admittedly, we are in a budget crunch. I'd like to see how you guys are proposing to do this, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?